Good evening. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education Work Session for Monday, December 7th, 2020. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And the first thing we want to do is we have some of our family that have passed. So we're going to call for a moment of silence in memory, or a moment for Terry McAlpin, who was a student at the Opportunity School, who passed away on December 5th, and then Alden White, who was an exceptional children's assistant at Carl A. Fur Elementary School, who passed away on December 2nd. So with me, please take 30 seconds for the moment of silence. And our thoughts and prayers and condolences are with those families. Moving on, item number three is the introduction of our new board members. And we have three new board members, Ms. Denise Adcock, welcome, Mr. Tim Fur, welcome, and Ms. Keisha Sandage, welcome. All board members are here in person at the Ed Center, and we do have Ms. Emily Wagner on the line, our teacher liaison. So we'll move on to our next item, which is what we do every year, is we determine who our chair and vice chair are going to be. And for fairness, we're going to hand that over to Dr. Lauter to call for nominations.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. And Mr. Shaw, if you don't mind, kind of check behind me. As you know, probably the thing I get the most nervous about is the process for this, to make sure I follow it, so please correct me if we do anything wrong. I also want to say welcome to all of our new board members. And Mr. Walter has sworn back in. We look forward to working with all of you guys to the benefit of all the students in Cabarrus County. So, welcome, and we will get started. So, at this time, I will open the nominations for Cabarrus County Schools Board Chair.
I'd like to make a recommendation for Holly Grimsley.
I'll second that.
All right, Mr. Fur has nominated Ms. Grimsley, and Ms. Blackwell seconded that. Are there any other nominations for the Cabarrus County School Board Chair?
I'd like to be nominated as continuous Board Chair.
All right, so Mr. Walter has nominated Mr. Walter for Chair. Are the, is there, do we have a second for the nomination for Mr. Walter?
And Dr. Lauter, technically for nominations, one doesn't need a second. It's frequently called for, but if Mr. Walter wants to remain as a candidate, then he certainly can, and then go up for the election.
Okay, thank you, sir. I didn't know that, so I appreciate the correction, as always. So, so there are two members up for, for School Board Chair. Are there any other nominations for the Cabarrus County School Board Chair?
I'll make the motion, nominations be closed.
All right, we will take a motion. We have a second for Ms. Carpenter's motion.
Second.
Second. So at this time, we will declare the nominations for School Board Chair closed, and we will now call for, I will now call for votes on the nominees. As Ms. Grimsley was nominated first, we will vote on her first. If you vote for Ms. Grimsley to be the School Board Chair, please raise your hand. So we have six of the seven School Board members. And so because Ms. Grimsley received the majority of the vote, she is elected as the Cabarrus County School Board Chair. Congratulations, Ms. Grimsley. And we will now move on.
Congratulations. I did forget to mention that Judge Christie Wilhelm came here and swore us in this evening, so I'd like to thank her for coming and doing that. And Ms. Grimsley, I wish you the best.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Thank you, Dr. Lauter. And I would just like to say welcome to the new School Board members, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you. And at this point in time, it is time to elect the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Vice Chair position, and I will open the floor for nominations.
I would like to make a nomination for Tim Fur for Vice Chair.
So I have a motion on the floor for Mr. Fur. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
I'd like to make a nomination.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a nomination for Ms. Blackwell as Vice Chair.
Okay, so, all right, thank you. Do we have a second? Hearing none, may I?
Thank you, Carolyn.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for Mr. Fur, who actually was nominated first. So I will ask that the board members who are in favor of nominating Mr. Fur for Vice Chair, please express with your hand risen. And keep them up, please. I'm going to go ahead and just do a roll call. So I have Denise Adcock, Tim Fur, Keisha Sandridge, myself, and Laura Blackwell in favor of Mr. Fur being nominated as Vice Chair. And since he carries the majority vote, that motion will carry unanimously. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Walter. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Lauter. Actually, let me go back here.
Board Attorney.
Yes. No, actually, we're going to move to setting the agenda. And I will congratulate Mr. Fur, as he is coming back and has already resided one point in time as Vice Chair. So, let's move to number four, setting the agenda. At this point in time, I would like to ask the board to allow me to amend the agenda to move item number 6.02, which is the report for the realignment of the middle school, down to a discussion item, and make it number 7.02. And then I would also like to add an 8.06, just a couple of discussion items about board retreat and board committees. May I have a motion?
I make a motion to amend the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to amend the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. At this point in time, I will turn it over to our attorney, Brian Shaw, who will discuss signing of Code of Ethics by the board.
Thank you, Ms. Grimsley. Congratulations to Holly Grimsley and Tim Fur for your elections, and congratulations to Ms. Sandage and Ms. Adcock for your election to the board. Look forward to working with you. It's a great position that you are in. Whenever new board members come on, they are subject to a Code of Ethics under the state statute and also under Cabarrus County Board policy. And the practice has been for the newly seated board members to sign the Code of Ethics. And so I have copies of the Code of Ethics. The Code of Ethics basically just repeat what is already in Board Policy 2120, and I have a copy of that policy 2120 here as well, if anybody would like to, to see it. But my preference would be just to have the new board members sign it, because the other board members signed it in 2018, I believe. But if all board members want to sign now, we could have them all sign that.
Do we have another agenda item that modifies the Code of Ethics? As a first read?
The question was that there is an agenda item that would modify that Code of Ethics. Yes, one of the proposed first-read policies would modify the Code of Ethics. But it would be the board's preference to go ahead with it as it is, or just to wait and see what the board's going to do on the policy. I didn't want to presume that the board would adopt and change policy.
So my thought would be, since that one actually carries before the second read, we should go ahead with the signing of that Code of Ethics. And then should that change, then we can address that later.
I think that's fine.
Great.
So, I will pass out the Code of Ethics to the new board members and ask them to sign.
So, new board members, just while you're doing that, I'll interpret what just took place in case that was confusing. So since there is a revision possibly in the Code of Ethics on first read that we'll be addressing tonight, there may not be anything to take place, but should there be, it really won't be implemented until it's after second read. So that, that way, we won't, we wouldn't take any action until it passes on a second read.
And if board members, new board members could just provide those to Dr. Lauter, perhaps, and he can give them to the board clerk, and she'll retain them with the records.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, and now, board members, we are going to move on to Report Section, Items Under Number Six, with 6.01, and now the new 6.02, being the Quarterly Forecast and the District Updates by Dr. Lauter, so I will turn it over to you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you again. Congratulations, Ms. Grimsley. Haven't said congratulations to Mr. Fur as the Vice Chair, so congratulations, Mr. Fur. We look forward to working with both of you guys for the betterment of Cabarrus County schools. So we did implement a couple of years ago to try to put in a quarterly forecast, which was just to tell you what we now have on the agenda for the next three months, so you would see what was coming up. If, especially once our new board members kind of get in the groove, if there was something that you really wanted or asked for, then we could adjust that. So, right now, January is Budget Amendments, which you'll see usually is on every month, pretty much for the possibility of a budget amendment, if Ms. Klutz needs to do that. Policy, as Ms. Grimsley just said, you guys will pretty much do every month unless we come to a pause, and we usually don't. Anything that's a construction update or anything around budget is kind of an ongoing agenda item. And then I think Ms. Grimsley mentioned that you're actually going to talk about the planning session, which I think in the past, we called a retreat, but sometimes that sounded like we were going to be swimming or playing basketball, and it didn't really do that. It was really an all-day meeting, is what that turned out to be. So we started calling that a planning session. So it sounds like you guys are going to talk about that in just a little while. And right now, that's scheduled for January. And then Dr. Hill is going to talk about EOG and EOC Summer Program, which some of that is state mandated and is changing a little bit, but she's going to give you an update on that in January. In February, again, Budget Amendments, Policy Construction, and then February is CTE Month, so we'll have a highlight from the CTE Department. And then in March was when the budget process will really begin, and it'll be brought forward to y'all. Again, Budget Amendments, the contract for the audit for the school system will come up for approval for you guys in March. Policy Construction, and then Mr. Schultz, I think is next, is going to give you an overview of the middle school realignment for the new Roberta Road Middle School that the board voted on a couple of weeks ago. But that will then come up for a vote, essentially, to look at the realignment process, but Mr. Schultz will give you an update on that in just a few minutes. So, is there any questions about anything in the quarterly forecast, or something that you really would like added? It may be something that, you know, we wait another week or two, or get into the flow of a new Board Chair, Vice Chair, but certainly we'll be glad to entertain that and try to schedule it if it's something you guys would like to add to the agenda. If not, then again, that's our quarterly forecast. We'll try to do that again in March for April, May, and June, and we try to just give you a heads-up of what's coming, so you'll know, or if you're really looking for, hey, when are we going to talk about this? We're trying to give you an update of what's coming along. So, I think we're good with the quarterly forecast and can move on.
Last year, you had a teacher leader cohort introduction. Is that happening this year, too?
Yeah, some of that changed because of being in person, so we kind of pulled that, we're looking to bring that back. So we'll give you an update of that when, when we come back. That, right now, because of the COVID situation, is in a, kind of in flux. All right, thank you.
Do you have anything under District Updates? I was going to let you just do both of those at the same time?
The, we're going to do District Updates in just a little bit, which will be all, but I think that's after Mr. Schultz, right? And we'll kind of, all of the members of Cabinet, all the assistant superintendents will come in and do a little bit of that in just a few minutes.
So that's going to, it actually had, I just moved the realignment discussion down to 7.02. District Updates were you for 6.03. Are we moving both of those? Is that what you're saying?
I'm sorry, must not have followed. So District Updates is going to be before Middle School Realignment?
If that's okay with you.
Okay, yeah, then we can go ahead. I think, they may not be ready yet, but Ms. Klutz, I think, is the first person that was going to go to come in to do the District Updates. And we can start that in just a minute. All of the Cabinet, to make sure we had as few people as possible for social distance, is here in the building, but they're only going to come in whenever they're presenting. And Ms. Klutz, I believe, is the first presenter, but we can go ahead and bring that presentation up, and she can come to start the presentation.
And if it makes more sense, and you need me to move that down below Mr. Schultz, we can do that as well. Whatever's your...
Yeah, Mr. Schultz, you want to go ahead and do the, the realignment, or?
Either way, I'll go with it.
Yeah. They just may not be ready, because they were thinking this was coming first, I think.
Okay. So do you want us to move on to discussions, starting with 7.01?
Yeah, Mr. Schultz, you just want to go ahead and do the Middle School Realignment? That's how it was listed, so let's just go ahead and do that.
Ms. Lane will be joining us as well, and she'll be taking my spot here momentarily. And we also have Matthew Cropper joining us online as well, and he'll actually be running the slideshow that we have, so you'll see that on the screen. So, good evening, everyone, and lots of congratulations, a lot of first times in terms of our new board members. Well, second, second time for, third. Okay, congratulations. And Ms. Grimsley, congratulations on Board Chair, and Mr. Fur, congratulations on the Vice Chair position as well. So, I'd like to thank you, first off, just for taking time last month, before some of you officially started your capacity, to kind of dig in with Francis, myself, and Mr. Cropper, to learn about the realignment project. It's a seven-month-long realignment project where we engage stakeholders. We have a, an internal planning committee, we have a public action committee, and then we also have opportunities for public information sessions. So in fact, our next public action committee, which is our second one, occurs this Thursday, and our next public information session is December 17th. So we'll be engaging the public in that, and hope you all can join us, join us on that, and we'll send you a formal invitation for that here shortly. So as I said, we partnered with Cropper Consulting as we gauge all our stakeholders. It's an iterative process. So, so far, we've been through, actually, it's probably more, but somewhere around 14 or 15 different iterations of plans. Within, we formalized four plans, and then based on, actually, since we've met, we've had two Internal Planning Team Committee meetings, we have a Public Action Committee, and we now have three options. And we'll eventually riddle that down to one option by the time we make a recommendation to you in March. And so tonight marks the, kind of the formal introduction of that to our public, of the process, and it will be, everything, all the information will be housed on the Cabarrus County Schools website. We'll show you that shortly. And before we, and then as we progress to the final recommendation in March, we will continue to share information through that website. So all the statistics that you've received, all the data behind all of that, and all the information that you've been privy to at this point, that will now become a public, and as we try to make this a very transparent process as we realign for our middle schools. So I'd like to turn it over to Francis Lane, and she'll kind of outline the parameters of the process. And I think, really, what I, what I always tell, tell everyone, that if you, if you remember one thing, remember our priorities. Remember the criteria that we have on which we base this realignment. They're very important. There's nine of those. Francis will go over those, and we'll always, you know, constantly refer back to those criteria that we use for realignment. So with that, Ms. Lane?
Hello, good evening. Thank you so much for having us. Congratulations to Ms. Grimsley and Mr. Fur, and to the new board members we have here tonight. I wanted to provide a little bit of a background for you. In April 2019, the Cabarrus County Board of Education approved new elementary, middle, and high school boundaries that are currently our boundaries this year, predominantly due to the construction of the new elementary school, Hickory Ridge, and the new high school, West Cabarrus. But right now, due to increasing residential development and overutilized facilities, the school board is in the midst of a capital plan to add a new middle school. The construction of the new middle school is scheduled to open in the fall of 2022, and it necessitates a realignment of the current middle school zones. We have some project, project objectives. We wanted to explore and develop this student realignment option through a community-engaged process. We want to focus on developing options that best meet the Cabarrus County Schools' realignment criteria. We also want to remain knowledgeable about the recent realignment from the 2019 process into attempt to minimize the impact on students who were affected. It should be understood, though, that any student could be impacted during this next realignment. If feasible, we do want to make adjustments to elementary and high school zones to better align feeders, but attempt to minimize those changes at that level if possible, since we just went through a pretty large realignment for elementary, middle, and high school. And then we will recommend a board, a plan to the school board in March of 2021, which will be provided by Mr. Schultz and our consultant, Cropper GIS Consulting, on behalf of the Internal Planning Team. To give you a little bit about our progress right now and where we are, so the Internal Planning Team, which is made up of a number of department stakeholders and school administration, we meet every other Monday, and have been meeting every other Monday since the middle of September, to review and revise draft realignment options. In these meetings, we are reviewing maps and all of the statistics behind those maps. We've had over 14 iterations of draft options that have been considered, and we have narrowed, just as Brian had mentioned, down to three realignment options moving forward, which are now referred to as Option Blue, Option Yellow, and Option Pink. We have formulated the Public Advisory Committee, which we refer to as the PAC, and had their first meeting on November 19th to solicit feedback of our options. And the next PAC meeting is actually scheduled for this week, on December 10th. The first public information session was held on October 8th to give public, the public, an overview of the project and the objectives, all the background information on the realignment study, and the next public information session is scheduled on December 17th. So this is the realignment, realignment criteria that Brian had mentioned. So anytime we're, we're looking at these plans, we always keep these realignment criteria at the forefront and in focus of developing these plans. So this is what we follow when we're evaluating the realignment options. They're basically rules, principles for us to always adhere to. The first is balanced school utilization. So we want to make every, every effort to have equitable utilization where possible. We want to account for future growth, to allow for increasing attendance in our high-growth areas. We want to try to provide close proximity, that students should be assigned to schools within the closest proximity to their homes wherever possible. We want to try to maximize transportation efficiencies, so make every effort to consider transportation zones, school bus, and car rider, parent commuting patterns. We want to establish clear fear patterns, so that's making an effort to, especially from middle to high school, that students aren't split in a lot of different ways, and they're, they're transitioning with familiar faces. We want to allow the highest grade at the current schools to legacy enroll. So what that means is students who would be in the fifth, eighth, or 12th grade in the realignment year, to allow them to stay at their current school. Again, we want to minimize impact on students when making boundary adjustments. We want to account for economic, cultural, and ethnic diversity, to make sure that schools are inclusionary and not adversely affected by realignment. We want to make, make every effort to establish contiguous zones. And the last one is to use majors, major roads or natural boundaries between zones. So, major highways, creeks, rivers, geographic boundaries, that such between each one of our zones. All the criteria are in no particular order or priority. Like, again, I said, we try to look at those equally, and try to do that to focus on the best plan that touches at least all of the criteria, but does not focus solely on one. And as Brian mentioned, we have partnered with Cropper GIS Consulting, so Matthew Cropper, the president and CEO, is going to take over the presentation here and describe to you a little bit about our statistical analysis, the maps, and the assumptions that we have behind the project.
Thank you, Francis, and thank you all for the opportunity to present to you tonight. My name is Matthew Cropper with Cropper GIS Consulting, and my primary objective in this presentation to you is to, as Mr. Schultz and Ms. Lane said, is to give you an orientation on the maps that we're going to be sharing with the Public Advisory Committee here this Thursday, as well as maps that we are going to be sharing on December 17th. There's a chance that the maps could potentially be, be modified, or maybe even reduced, before we get to the 17th, but we don't anticipate that being very likely. So, tonight is the very first formal introduction of these options, and they will be made, they are public now in the public, and out in the public's eyes. And so we wanted to use this just as a formal introduction to you. And so I'm going to go over a broad perspective of the maps, so that you could see how the maps differ, and just understand how, how the different maps come into play. Before I get in there, just to touch a little bit about the groundwork and how we're estimating enrollment, we, and some of the parameters that we're working with. As Ms. Lane said, we're working to incorporate a zone for the new middle school that's opening in fall 2022. That new middle school has a design capacity of 1,200, although they are expecting to have some programmatic elements to that school that are going to draw students from across the county into that zone. And so in order to be able to account for that, and to be able to be proactive and allow some space for students to come in from out of zone, and students outside of the zone to have the opportunity to participate in those programs, we're planning for 900 students, and when we start targeting the number of students inside the zone for our, for our, our boundary. And that's, that gives some space for kids to come in from out of zone, and for the, for the programmatic element of the school design. We're counting any student who lives inside an area that goes to their zone school, those students are assumed to, that's really what makes up our estimates. We are, we are preserving student rates and mobility of students coming in and out of zone that exists in Cabarrus for many reasons at many schools. And what we want to do is make sure that we plan and estimate our enrollment in a way that we don't accidentally fill up a school with kids who live in the area, and then not have there be enough space for kids to come in from out of the zone and participate in those programs. And so we have a lot of experience in doing this and estimating enrollment, and that's, and we are ensuring that, that we are planning zones to account for that ebb and flow that happens inside zones due to your programs. And then finally, if there's any student attending outside of their zone, we're assuming they go there. I already, I already talked on that. And then we're working off the September 20th, 2020 student database, when we base our estimates, although we have been looking also at 2019-20 data, because we know there was an impact in your enrollment this year as a result of COVID. And, and so we want to be able to make sure that we understand what it could be, what it was in 2019, what is in 2020, so that we make sure that we don't, that we can be proactive and assess the impact of that as we work through our options. We have also, as we have evolved the process and worked with, with the group and worked with Cabarrus County, and the, and the Internal Planning Team and the PAC, we've, we've, we've put a lot of statistics and data together. And as we were working through this, we keep adding more statistics as we look at different things. And as it sits now, we're looking at around a 45 to 50-page document with statistics and maps, a lot of different data on elementary, middle, and high school zones, because remember, our focus is middle school, but we do, we are evaluating elementary and high school adjustments to align feeder patterns, and also potentially provide some capacity relief. But the focus is middle, we're trying to keep the, the impact minimal at elementary and high, but with that said, we still have to present data on that and show... high, but with that said, we still have to present data on that and show what the impact may be of doing that. And what we've done is we've implemented a scoring system, a scoring metric, that evaluates the different criteria and guidelines that Francis went over with you, and we give them an actual score. And so we have been looking at this and seeing how the options score, and what I can tell you is that the three options that we have right now all do a very good job of adhering to the criteria and our objectives. These three are the ones that rose to the top, that made it to the top, that we felt were eligible enough to bring to you and also the public as drafts, knowing that they could change. So I'm not going to get too deep into the actual statistics and data in this presentation. We do have a handout that you could look at the data and statistics. I'm going to focus more on the maps, but just know that we are studying the statistics and that these options all are relatively comparable in terms of their adherence to the criteria and guidelines. So what I'm going to do is just give you a little walkthrough on the options. And this is our interactive map, and you can go to this site at croppermap.com/ccsrealignment. And we also have a link in our presentation, and I'll show you some other places that you can get access to this. But we have an interactive map, and I talked about this at our public information session one about the interactive map. And members of the public probably are familiar with this because we used this as well in the first effort when we did some realignment for you a year or two ago. But what you see here are the middle school zones, your current middle school zones. And the new middle school sits here on the western edge of the J and Free Zone. So the background color are the zones for the communities that are assigned to each middle school, and then the green triangles are the middle schools on the map, and we have them labeled as well. So I'm going to toggle on the options, and I'm going to look at Option Blue first. And when you look at each option, you'll see that the new middle school zone has a teal-colored zone around it, and the colors are consistent across every single option, so you can see how they vary. Also, when you look at these maps, you can see that there's a bold outline on the map that shows where the current zone line is. And so in this particular map, particular option, Option Blue, the Winkler Zone extends to the far west of the county, all the way into Concord, and this zone comes over into the area that says Cox Mill Elementary and Cox Mill High School. So it crosses over the interstate and goes into the Harris Road Middle School Zone, which is on the southern end right here. And this is fed into Winkler. And the reason for doing this is to give Harris Road Middle School capacity relief that it greatly needs. Harris Road Middle School is the middle school of all your middle schools that is the greatest overutilized and is in the greatest need of capacity relief as it sits right now. And so you'll see common threads where we're pulling area on the south end of Harris Road into Winkler Middle School in every option to give Harris Road Middle School the capacity relief that it really needs. We did look at other configurations and prior options, looking at maybe taking up to the north and sending that around to northwest and some other configurations, but as we started looking at that, it just didn't accomplish our objectives. It didn't give Harris Road Middle enough relief without getting real close to Harris Road Middle. And so you'll see a common theme in that all of the three options that we're considering pull the southern section of Harris Road and different pieces and parts to Harold Winkler to give Harris Road that capacity relief, like you see here in the blue option. The new middle school option follows along 29, so Winkler Zone currently comes down and around, and this area south of 29 that was in Winkler is now feeding into the new middle school. And then the western edge, the western end of the current Winkler Zone feeds into the new middle school. And I'll zoom in just once or twice so we can see a little more detail here. And so this is Pitt School Road that runs up, and then the area west of Pitt School Road all the way up to Weddington would feed into the new middle school in this particular option. Another common theme, the thread that you'll see in all of the options, is the new middle school sits here, and the communities that are around that are currently in J and Free's, these communities in this area feed into the new middle school in every option. Now, it does differ because you have Stowe Road right here. So in the blue option, the zone line does not include communities off of Stowe Road, but everything else on that western edge of J and Free's feeds into the new middle school. And then finally, another thing that you'll see in a common thread in all options and also in the blue option is this bold line is the northern line for the current Hickory Ridge Middle School. In every option, you'll see that this area, and it goes actually down below 49, down to the railroad tracks, this section right here that's in Hickory Ridge Middle School feeds into the new middle school in every single option. And you'll see that with a focus on giving Hickory Ridge the capacity relief that it needs, as well as addressing some feeder pattern alignment. This particular option does differ a little bit from the others in that you'll see Farmil Road here, the new middle school line dips down and picks up some area from CC Griffin. CC Griffin extends along 49 all the way up, and you'll see that this area right here off of Farmil Road feeds into the new middle school, and that comes out of CC Griffin. And also, an area that's south of 49 that's in CC Griffin feeds into J and Free's. And that gives J and Free's students, because they lost students from the communities that are right around the new middle school, and then we added more into Free's to help balance that utilization, feeder patterns, and then just giving everything some enrollment relief and balance, if at all possible. So that is the extent of the middle school option blue. As I have explained, there are no impacts to Mount Pleasant Middle, no impacts to Concord Middle, and North Cabarrus Middle School are not impacted in this blue option. I'm going to go ahead and turn on the yellow option, and as you can see, I'll toggle it back and forth. I'll go back to blue and then go back to yellow real quick, and back to yellow. Let's see. On here, there we go. So this looks similar to the blue option, but it does have some differences. The area that is coming out of Harris Road Middle School is a little bit greater, is a little bit larger of an area that this region up here has actually fed into Winkler in this particular map to give some more capacity relief to Harris Road and then also balance utilization. The new middle school line still follows along 29, but you'll see that over in the area on both sides of Pitt School Road, this area starts to feed in, different areas and communities start to feed into the new middle school. And so you'll see in the blue option, this area did not, off of east of Pitt School Road, didn't feed in the new middle school, stayed in Winkler, and in this option, it does feed into the new middle. And then one less community further down Pitt School Road on the southwest side stays in Winkler in this option. So just trying to give it a different look to see how many different scenarios could be created, and this is one that has gained some traction. The new middle school zone still picks up the area, like I mentioned, around the blue, but notice the Stowe Road is in the light teal now. So Stowe Road, that new middle school line in blue option was not including Stowe Road, and in this one, it extends over to include Stowe Road and then some communities off of Roberta. The same communities come out of Hickory Ridge Middle School into the new middle school to give Hickory Ridge their capacity relief, but that community off of Farmil Road stay in CC Griffin in the yellow option. And then you'll see, to give Griffin some capacity relief and also adequately utilize J and Free's, some more communities off of 49 come out of Griffin and feed into J and Free's. It extends all the way up until you get to 601 in this area. And so the J and Free Zone looks a little bit different in the yellow option versus the blue option. And again, schools, Northwest Cabarrus Middle, Concord Middle, and Mount Pleasant Middle School are not impacted in this option, and just really working on schools on the western edge of the county that I have demonstrated and have talked about. The third draft option that we are looking at, considering as we are continuing to evaluate, is the pink option. And the pink option, again, you'll see a common theme here, a common thread, and how their general shapes are similar between all three options. Again, a little bit different of a look in terms of communities that come out of Harris Road into Winkler, but still that same common theme on the southern edge of Harris Road is the area that we're looking at as the primary impact area for Harris Road to give them capacity relief. The new middle school extends off of Pitt School Road, much like the blue option that I showed you in the blue option here. And then we follow south of 29, out of Winkler, into the new middle school. One difference that you'll see, and I guess I should say, another difference that you'll see in terms of evaluating some of the differences and nuances between each option, is this pink option, notice the new middle school line and the teal, how before it didn't include Stowe Road, and then the yellow option did include Stowe. Now, this one extends it even further into, closer to Concord, all the way to Old Charlotte Road, and to feed into the new middle school. And so this is a different look, it does follow major roads, this is one that has had some thought and talk about possibly being too close to J and Free's as we move that line, but it does achieve other elements of the criteria very nicely. We have the same community north that's in the current Hickory Ridge Middle School Zone, down to the railroad tracks, feeds in the new middle school. That's the same area that I've demonstrated or I've depicted in all three options, so that area moves in all three options. And then just a little bit different of a look for J and Free's, it's a little bit more compact in this map, and that J and Free's stops at about Central Heights Road here, but this area that's in the darker color feeds out of CC Griffin and into J and Free's. It picks up a few more communities off of Zion Church and Route 1153. And so this is just a little bit different look for the middle school for J and Free's. But there are pros and cons with all of these options, and we're still evaluating them. We're evaluating things as it relates to the criteria and focusing on the data, making sure that we make data-driven decisions and data-driven suggestions and recommendations in removing the emotion that always exists with this type of process. So that's the extent of middle school, and I think what I can do is I could just go pretty quickly through the elementary and high school to give you an idea for the extent of the impact at those levels. What you'll see is that with every option, they have a color. So the blue option for middle school coincides with the elementary option for blue. And so we can potentially mix and match these options together, and say if we like the yellow option, elementary, merge that with the blue option in middle, but we have to be careful doing that because of the feeder pattern alignment. But one of the things you'll see with elementary is that there are minimal adjustments here. The only adjustments that you'll see that exist at elementary school exist down around Harrisburg Road in the Patriots Elementary School area. There are no elementary school adjustments on the table currently that we have currently drafted in any other part of the county. It's really down in the area around Harrisburg Elementary and Patriots to align with feeder patterns, again, trying to keep things minimal. So I'm going to zoom in on this area and kind of give you a little bit of an orientation, and we can look at the options. So as you look at this option, I'll first turn on the current elementary zones, just to give you a background on what the current zones look like. So these are your current elementary zones, and in the blue option, the Harrisburg Elementary Zone extends now south to the railroad tracks. And so this area along north of the railroad tracks would feed into Pitt School Road, and that's done for feeder pattern alignment. And as well as another adjustment you'll see here is this western edge of Patriots Elementary off of Farmil Road, this currently goes to Patriots, but Patriots does have a substantial amount of development that's planned. If I look at the development, we have a development layer here, you can turn on the developments and just look at the elementary yield labels here. It shows us how many students are expected to come out of each development. And Patriots Road Elementary School is in an area that does have a lot of substantial development that's planned in the future. And we do anticipate that having an impact on the Patriots Road Elementary School. And so the IPT, the planning team, has considered possibly moving some area out of Patriots as a proactive measure and moving them into Harrisburg Elementary here to give Patriots that capacity relief and further capacity relief, and as we know what's coming down the pipeline with new developments. So this is what you see for elementary option blue. The only changes that are being considered here are pulling out of Harrisburg to Pitt School Road and then moving some Patriots to Harrisburg, and that is the extent of it. The yellow option is the same configuration for the elementary schools. So the blue and yellow option, the elementary school zone lines are identical for blue and yellow. The same area gets pulled out of Patriots into Harrisburg, and then the Harrisburg line goes down to the railroad tracks. The pink elementary option is the one option that does look different between the three, different between the three. It still goes down to the railroad tracks to send to Pitt School Road from Harrisburg, but you'll see that we keep the area off of Farmil Road in Patriots in the pink option. And so we can mix and match these with whatever recommendation we have, but we are evaluating the different options to continue to evaluate them and see which one best adheres to our objectives and our criteria. And then finally, I'm going to give you a little overview on the high schools. And again, high school is something that we were trying to do, make adjustments to align feeders, but we're not looking at comprehensive changes at high school. There's been a lot of changes that existed over the last year, implemented this year. There's still legacy enrolled students coming through to West Cabarrus High School, and so that's still working its way. So we wanted to do minimal adjustments at the high school as it sits now, but we did need to make changes to get to resolve small feeder pattern splits that may exist. So looking at the blue option, you'll see, when you look at the high schools' lines here, you'll see very similar shapes that existed in the middle schools. This is the high school blue option, and in this option, some commonalities and things that I'll talk about. In every option, there is an area that extends across, out of Concord, off of McGill Road, that they go to Winkler Middle School in this particular area right here, and then they feed into West Cabarrus High School. So it's a very small split of students. And I'll show you that in the current high school zone line. And let me show you the current middle school zones. So here are the middle school zones currently, Winkler is this area, and in the high school option, this area splits from Winkler into Concord. And so what we've done is we resolved that split in every option, and that this area does not travel into Concord, and the small section of Winkler no longer splits into Concord, and we just drew the line down to resolve that small split. So in every single option, you'll see it's a small number, about 12 students or so are coming from Concord into West Cabarrus High School, really to try to resolve a feeder pattern split, an inefficient split that existed. JM Robinson is the zone that really is, that changes shape the most in these options, in that it just aligns with the new middle school, for the most part. You'll see the area down here off of Farmil Road, this feeds into JM Robinson, where currently that area goes to Hickory Ridge High School. And so this area down in the south goes from Hickory Ridge High School, feeds into JM Robinson High School. Also, the area that's south of the railroad tracks that I mentioned, that area feeds into JM Robinson as well, and it currently goes to Hickory Ridge High School. And again, we're looking at aligning the feeder patterns in all three levels here. And then there is an area on the eastern edge of Pitt School Road that currently is in West Cabarrus High School, that feeds into JM Robinson to align the feeder patterns for the blue option, so that they all can fit together. There are no changes to Cox Mill High School, no changes to Northwest Cabarrus or Mount Pleasant. Central Cabarrus has a small adjustment in this area, but I don't think it really has much population, if any. And so really, we're looking at JM Robinson and Hickory Ridge High School as the two ones that are impacted the most, with some in West Cabarrus on the western edge in the various options. So this is the blue option. Yellow option looks similar to the middle school line. Yellow option looks similar to the, the, the middle school line and that, and so, this is the yellow option where you can see there, we maintain the same lines here. And the only adjustment that exists with the yellow in, in this option is that area we talked about that moved from Concord to West Cabarrus and then aligning the southern line to the railroad tracks for feeder pattern alignment. It's really minimal adjustments, minimal shifts to, while still accomplishing our objectives. And then, the pink option looks very, the same. The pink option is just those two minor adjustments, the Concord to West Cabarrus High School, and then moving the line for Hickory Ridge down to the railroad tracks. So, this area north of railroad tracks feeds in to JM Robinson High School. And that's the extent of the options for blue, yellow, and pink that we are currently working through. Like I said, this is all, we're going to, it's public, it's going to be public, and so, we will be tracking the general feedback that's received from this. We don't expect to get too much input yet until we, until we formally introduce these to the public on December 17th. And we are working with the, the Public Advisory Committee, a focus group of, of parent and community volunteers to give us some initial feedback and input as we, as we work towards the December 17th Public Information Session. So, the final things that I wanted to cover here are just some next steps. Like I said, we're meeting with the PAC this, this Thursday, sharing a lot of the same material, getting into diving into more of the data side of things and looking at things, and really in preparing for the Public Information Session on December 17th. We're going to have that on the 17th, and we're going to leave a survey with the public on that meeting on the 17th, and then that survey will run all the way through the holiday, and then we'll take that survey down after the new year and then study the results and continue to evaluate options, working again with the focus on, we'll be working with that internal planning team every other week, like Frances said, but we are meeting with the PAC again at the end of January to give one final look at our maps and what, what, what track we're on and what we're thinking before we get to a final recommendation to the board in March. And I wanted to just share a couple of things about communications methods and tools since the public will be watching this, is that there is a student realignment page on the school district's website. And if you go to the school district's website, you'll see student realignment. You can also go to cabarrus.k12.nc.us/realignment to get to this page. And it really is a landing page. We are managing a webpage that, that has, is a repository for all of this information. And so, when you get in here and you click to the middle school realignment study website, you'll see something that looks like this, and it's a blue, blue-black, blue background. And we have continued to update that. We introduced this at the first public info session, but now there's more information on there. There is information, let me go to ccsrealignment.com here, just show you what we have. So, you'll see on this site, there is an overview of the project, so you could see information, the timeline, there's a link to the interactive map, so you can get the feedback form, different things that you can get access to on the general overview of the project. We have our latest draft realignment option maps that are posted here, and these are PDF maps, static PDF maps, that if you don't like the interactive map format, you can go on here and kind of scan through the different PDF maps of, of the options. We have the online interactive map, and that showed, that brings up that map that I was navigating through to show you the maps. We have our general feedback form where many member of the public can provide input to us as, through any time at, through the course of the study, so that's open at all times. And then, the December School Board update is where we have the presentation that I gave, that I've given you today, as well as that handout with all the statistics and the maps in it. So, the public can go there to get access to the materials that we're sharing with you tonight. And we'll continue to add little buttons and little placards on this site as we have more information. There will be a new one for the Public Information Session in December that'll probably, that'll probably step in line right here and everything else will move down. We like to put the most recent meeting first in this, in this, this webpage. So, this is where the public can go to get access to all the resources and materials that we are considering and that we're working with as we prepare for the December 17th Public Info Session. And we'll share a little bit more detail with the public on how to orient, how to interpret tables and statistics and things like that at that time. And that is, that is all I have for now. There are just other helpful links, quick links at the end of this presentation for people to get access to things. But I'm happy to answer any questions if, if anybody has any, and that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cropper. Any questions at this time?
Board members, and actually, I think I'll just, one by one, let's go around the room just to make sure if everybody has anything that you would like to have added for the next week's meeting. So, I'll start with Ms. Carpenter. Anything tonight?
No.
Ms. Adcock?
I do have a question. Which one of the plans, there was four originally, was there one plan that was taken out?
Yeah, we had a plan labeled 1B, so that, that was the one that was taken out.
Mr. Fur?
I'm afraid so. All right. One question is, and I may have missed it in the presentation, but when we met earlier, you had a breakdown on each where, what the, what the final numbers were going to be at every school. Do we have that?
Yes, that's in that statistical handout, and so, we can, I could send that as a follow-up to you to make sure you have the most recent, so that, that's on that website as well.
Okay. And another thing I was going to ask, and, you know, I'm kind of the old school. I was here when we used to, we didn't pay someone to do our redistricting. I'm not trying to be rude or anything, but that's, you know, that's how we did it before. And I was wondering, did we not just redistrict high school and elementary a year or two ago?
We did. That, that came into, came into being this year, so that redistricting began this year, and that was, most of that was high school, and then there, then, then the next amount that was impacted were the elementary school students.
Right. So, are any of those students that were moved a year ago going to have to move again?
We're analyzing that. If, if it is, it's like very, very few.
Oh, that shouldn't ever happen.
But we're going to identify that and make sure that, and, and try to make sure that that does not happen.
Okay. And also, I heard during the presentation, there was one little area that he was going to move 12 students to affect feeder school alignment. Is moving 12 students worth that?
Well, I think that's some of the feedback that we'll get. So, that's, that's definitely an area that we'd want feedback on. Currently, those 12 students go by themselves to a high school, and one of our realignment criteria is to, to not do that, is to have, you know, at least half of the students or close to half of the students be able to travel together to the next feeder school.
Mr. Walter?
I had similar questions to Mr. Fur, actually, but you can provide us with the demographics of the projections for each of the schools?
Yeah, that's, that's part of that statistical handout that you've, we received it when we had the four options, and we have that that corresponds with this as well.
Okay. And the last time, we used something called a planning block where you had the, how many students for each elementary school and middle school and high school where it's in each neighborhood? Is that going to be done again so you can?
Yeah, those are a part of that, that interactive map that you can actually zoom down to those feeder blocks, so that, that is.
There is, yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Sandich?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation, by the way. I'm really big on public involvement, so I definitely appreciate the public being involved in this public advisory group. I want to ask how many members are on that group? And then, I also want to ask, in these public information sessions, are they well-attended? Was the first one well-attended?
Yeah, the first one was not that well-attended. It's pretty typical for a first public information session. I think it was also right around some election things that were going on as well, so it just wasn't that well-attended. But typically, not until the options come out do people get really interested. So, we do expect the 17th to be very well-attended, and, and that's one of the reasons why we want to come here, make that public. That's a little bit of an advertisement to encourage people to engage in that process as much, as much as possible. And quite honestly, I think realignment is probably one of the most public things that we do and really seek the, the feedback and support. And it's also one of those things that we know that we're not going to make everybody happy, but we want to listen to the ideas that, you know, we never would have come up with in our 30-member internal planning team or the Public Advisory Committee. We know that there are ideas and options out there because people experience things very differently than we experience them in our roles, so we want to make sure we hear from them.
And how many people did you say were on that public?
There are 10 on the Public Advisory Committee.
Has each middle school represented?
Yes, each middle, each middle school that's impacted by the realignment is, is represented.
I'm sorry, I had one more thing. I read the information that you guys sent out last week that came back from the Public Advisory Committee, and they had one of the concerns that I did when we talked about this in November, which was the three middle schools that were not being touched at all. Has there been any more discussion or not?
Yeah, we, we, like I said, we reevaluate this all the time, and reevaluate it against those criteria, those non-criteria that we have. And so, we'll continue to do that. And, you know, I'd say, you know, capacity issues at schools like Concord Middle, Middle School is one of those, you know, concerns that always comes up. It's, it's, it's not at capacity, not near capacity. And so, we look at that when we consider this. We also may come up with an idea that we can integrate that as a, the capacity issue into our school choice plan for the future as well, so that's, that informs other areas, not just the realignment.
Thank you.
Ms. Blackwell?
So, I just want to say that I think, I've been involved in the internal planning session of this on the committee. Unfortunately, I can't always get on the calls, even though Brian has done a wonderful job with trying to make that happen during my lunch breaks. And unfortunately, that doesn't always happen. But I do appreciate how, how informative that you've been as far as sending us information and then also allowing us to come to another planning session a few weeks ago just to kind of get feedback on where we are. We have come leaps and bounds from where we started from initially with this internal planning committee that we started. And, you know, I just think as we continue on with this process, it's going to, getting more information from the public, those that are actually in those areas that can give us feedback and response for what the best option is going to be will be crucial. But I, I, I think that we've definitely come very far from where we were initially when we started this process, so thank you.
Yep, thank you. Thank you for being a part of the committee as well.
So, I would just say that I'm assuming this is not going to come back to us at our business meeting, this is just a report presentation?
That's correct.
Okay. And that the next meeting will be December 17th for your PAC?
Good, that's, the 10th is PAC, which is Thursday, and then the 17th is the Public Information Session.
So, the board will see this again in January?
Yes, and you, again, you're more than welcome to attend the Public Information Session as well, and we hope you do join us.
Right, great. So, board members, I would just ask that if you have any additional questions or require any type of information between now and then, just email Mr. Schultz, copy Dr. Louder, if you'll copy me on it, and that way, we'll kind of all be in the same loop.
Yep.
Okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, now, we will be moving on to district updates. Dr. Louder?
Yes, ma'am. So, but since we had new board members coming on, we thought that it may be a good idea just to go through some highlights of each department and go through the presentation, have each of the assistant superintendents in their area basically present on their area. One of the things that lots of schools, whenever our principals are evaluating teachers, one of the methods that they often use is to say that they're going to go in the classroom and, and acknowledge two glows, G-L-O-W, and one grow, so to kind of say, hey, we're two things I really saw here that I liked and I want to highlight, and one thing maybe you can grow, you know, and, and expand on. So, we thought, well, let's just do that, let's go through each department, put a couple of things up that over the last few years were very proud of, they worked on that everybody may not be aware of, and then what's one thing that we're working on now to improve and to get better. And so, we just thought we'd do that as a big district highlight and go through each department for that, and then, you know, make sure that you're aware of some of the things that we're in the middle in, because we have some new people joining the board. So, we start out with Ms. Klutz, our Chief Financial Officer, and she will go through kind of, again, the, the glows and grows of the finance department.
Thank you, and good evening, board. So, the things that we're proud of in the finance department are many, but we'll just talk about a couple for today. The thing that I want to emphasize the most is our relationship and our partnership with our county, so our county commissioners, the management, the teams, we work together. And this, this building of this relationship happens because we spend time together, right? We meet Chair, Vice Chair, the manager, and Dr. Louder meets, the finance departments talk on a regular basis, and that has built an understanding of our needs. And so, prior, many years ago, we would go in with many lists of what our needs were, but I'm not sure that they understood our needs. And so, we've taken a lot of time to help them understand what our needs are, the whys behind the list. So, then, that just brings us to our funding, and I think as a result of our relationship and our partnership, we have seen increased funding. So, you look at that over five years, five years ago in 1516, our local funding was at 57 million, and this year, we're at 76 million. So, that is a $19 million increase over five years, or a 33% if you want to look at that as a percentage. So, of course, if I were sitting in your shoes, I would say, well, if we're going to increase students, I would expect our funds also to increase. But if you look at the, those percentages the same way, you're going to see that our enrollment only increased 10.3%, but our funding increased 33%. So, that's just a really good gauge that says that we're really making progress toward our, our funding goal. So, doing really well there. Another glow, or something that we're proud of, is our financial planning. So, we have an extensive budget process, development process. The budget committee has many layers, so it has a lot of folks involved before it comes to you. And what that does is it allows us to plan for difficult years. So, one of the, the most memorable events in my life as a CFO was 2011, 2012, where we had to cut over $6 million out of our budget. And so, I, you know, reevaluated that many times and said, how can we prevent that from ever happening again? And so, we can do that with ensuring that our fund balance and making good decisions and collaborating with, with Dr. Louder's support and the county commissioner's support and the Board of Education, making good decisions, keeping our fund balance at a comfortable, healthy level so that when we do have cuts that are unexpected and unplanned like COVID, then we can use our fund balance to supplement that. So, really proud that through COVID, we've not laid any people off. All of our employees are fully employed. We have no intentions of ever doing that either. So, and you can't really say that from all districts. So, we're really proud of that. So, our grows are something that we need to grow. So, we're continually partnering with the Cabarrus County Commissioners and the management to acquire reoccurring funding. The key word there is reoccurring, so we need funding that's going to continue every year. One-time funding helps, but it doesn't fix the problem or the situation. So, we've made significant progress on teacher supplements, but we're good there, we're not great, and we want to be great. We have a deferred maintenance backlog. We've been working on that for years. We really need to spend some time and some effort on our deferred maintenance. And then, of course, the technology lease is a reoccurring. We're making progress on that this year, and we're doing pretty well there. So, the thing that I would call to your attention the most is that deferred maintenance. We've got to keep our eye on the ball there.
All right. We just want to say how much we appreciate Ms. Klutz and her great work, and to emphasize what she emphasized here, too, is that we really have worked very hard and we want to, again, talk about our county, our county manager and our county commissioners who really have made an effort to try to understand that, and when they do, as, as Ms. Klutz said, then we move forward with a lot of things, and they, and there's never enough money for anyone, but we want to make sure that they know and understand our needs, and when they know and understand that, they've really worked hard to help us with that. So, we appreciate Ms. Klutz. Thank you very much. Our next area that we're going to move on to in the presentation is, I'm pretty sure is HR. Is that correct? We can go onto the next slide. And Ms. Jones couldn't be here tonight, so I'm going to go over the, the human resource presentation. So, the first set of glows of things we're very proud of are really, Ms. Klutz mentioned we're working on teacher supplement, but certainly something that we're very proud of. If you look in 2014 and 2015, we were at a flat way of distributing teachers. at a flat way of distributing teacher supplement. So what it would say is, if I'm a first-year teacher, my supplement might be $2,000. And it might stay at $2,000 for seven years before there was an improvement. So we worked really hard with the county to convert that to a percentage for a couple of reasons. One, it's easier to recruit, instead of having to look up on a table and say, oh, my supplement is $1,522. We tried to move that over so if we knew what the percent was, then it's easy to calculate if you're standing there recruiting a teacher. And so we converted over what that flat rate was in 2015, which is 5.81%. And today, you can see the increases that we've moved up today, that's 10%. So not quite doubling what the teacher supplement was in 2015, but certainly a major move forward, something that we worked really hard with the county to do. And again, we want to say how much we appreciate their support on working with us to be as competitive as possible. So for some of the new board members, if you're not aware, all of the districts in North Carolina pay a flat rate. For example, a beginning teacher makes $35,000. Each district then adds a supplement to that. Some districts give no supplement whatsoever, especially usually smaller districts. And other districts, there's, one of the larger districts in the state has about a 25% supplement, if you want to see the comparison there. So it is really what the local school district can put as an incentive to, to get teachers to come to the district. It really is our number one recruiting tool. And so to get that into a competitive rate, what we've been working with the county on is to at least be at the average of the state average. We're right about there now. That's a trailing indicator. So we're still waiting to see this year's data to see if we're at or a little bit above the state average is what we're trying to get to. So are we as high as we want to be? Absolutely not. But certainly, you know, almost doubling that since 2015 is certainly something that the county should be committed to work for us for, to help us recruit teachers. The second thing is our university partnerships, which some of you may not be aware of. So we have several of them. So right now, we have a teacher quality partnership with UNC Charlotte. That's a five-year, $1.8 million grant that funds an opportunity for a select group of aspiring teachers. They get paid, basically, beginning teacher pay $34,500 while they complete a UNC Charlotte residency plan. And then when they're, that's to diversify the teaching workforce in understaffed areas and high need schools in Cabarrus County. They can earn initial licensure and a Master of Arts in less than 18 months. It works on aspiring middle and secondary teachers in math, science, foreign language, and English as a second language. In addition to the wage, it covers tuitions, textbooks, and supplies. And it was developed with a collaboration between Cabarrus County Schools. It was funded by the U.S. Department of Education under the Teacher Quality Partnership, and it builds on UNC Charlotte's residency alternative with licensure. So we currently have our first cohort of 12 student teachers that are teaching, that student teach in the spring of 2021, and they'll be eligible for hire in the fall of 2021. So great grant, great partnership with UNC Charlotte. We're certainly very thrilled to be partners with them, and it's a great recruiting tool for us. The next one, we have some principal press preparation program with, that's High Point University. It, it does, it allows us to grow our own administrators, so to have teachers that are inside of our district that want to be administrators can apply and are awarded the grant. They remain in their teaching position for one year, and then they complete a full-time internship for year two. The grant covers the cost of tuition and fees and allows the interns to be paid at their current teacher salary for both years of the program. And then we have two teachers in that, in the first year of the program. Between 2016 and 2018, we had three participants. They're all administrators with us now. 2017 to 2019, one participant also is currently one of our administrators. And from 2020 to 2022, we have two enrolled, and they'll be eligible for, for a full-time administrator role in 2022. Next is the, the Teaching Scholars, which is NC, a partnership with NC State. It's to encourage highly qualified teachers, primarily in math, science, and special education when possible, to begin with us with a two-year experience with a partner school and with us as the district. They're, they, they work with us during their teaching semester and provide summer opportunities for these students to participate in curriculum development and a summer program such as a STEM camp. We will have our third cohort of scholar-student teaching in the spring of 2021. In the spring of 2019, we had one student teacher who's currently teaching high school math for us. In 2020, three student teachers, one teaching high school technology, one teaching middle school social studies, and one teaching middle school ELA and social studies. And in the spring of 2021, we'll have three student teachers, one elementary with a STEM focus, one middle school math, and one high school math. So again, something we're very proud to be a part of. It helps us recruit teachers a great deal for, for the teachers. We also have an NC State Master of Teaching Fellas Program. Two high school math teachers were selected through a process. They get grant, their grant funds cover the cost of tuition for them to complete a master's degree. And when they're done, they also complete their National Board certification. Teachers commit to teaching in Cabarrus County Schools for five years after that program begins. And the duration of that project runs from May of 2019 through 2024. Last, I think of our grants is the Transforming Principal Preparation Program. It's a three and three-quarters million dollar grant from the UNC System Office that allows UNC Charlotte to expand its capacity to develop school leaders for 11 districts. So this grant is with all of our region, basically, all of the 11 districts around us that we're in a consortium with. Pays for tuition books and all the fees while they work on the Masters of School Administration. Again, it's our own employees that we kind of get to grow from within. It's all the regions that are around us, that are around us. And currently, we have several candidates who are a part of that. So all of those are teacher and principal recruitment and preparation programs that, to be quite honest, pay for a large portion of what it costs to do that. Most of them are designed for us to be able to submit and grow our own people from within to become administrators. So we're proud to be a part of all those and certainly something that we want to continue to nurture. And for grows, we kind of mentioned, one of the things that we are working on is how we recruit teachers in a, in a virtual environment, right? So recruiting teachers in a pandemic has certainly been a challenge. For, again, new board members, we have approximately 2,400 teachers. Each year, we have about a 10% turnover rate. If you look at people who retire, people that move, that, that turnover rate is considerably lower than the state average. But it means that every year, we're going to have to hire somewhere around 240, 250 new teachers. They will not all live in Cabarrus County. So to be in a growing district the way we are now, we have to recruit, to be quite honest, from all over the country. And so doing that in a virtual environment is something that the HR Department is working on. So this past spring, in April, we did a virtual teacher fair. We had 421 candidates register for that, and quite a few hires that came out of that. I think we were all kind of wondering, well, what does that look like and what does it turn out to be? It was actually very successful. This fall, we have registered to attend 14 virtual fairs. Seven of those are in-state, seven of those are out-of-state. And then we had our own virtual recruitment fair in November. We had about 120 candidates register for that. So the challenge is to make sure that we're connecting to people in an environment that's very difficult to convince people to move to Cabarrus County. And then also, how do we do that through camera, but give some kind of a personal touch that makes people want to move to Cabarrus County? I think we've been pleasantly surprised that, again, in the last six or eight months, that it's worked very well. But it looks like we're going to be needing to continue doing that. And when we finally get over COVID, are there some elements of this that we can still connect to and maybe reach some people that we didn't get to before and be able to do that, you know, where there's no cost of traveling to recruit? So HR Department has continued to work and, work on that. As I said, it's been pretty successful, but it's definitely a challenge that we're trying to figure out in the new environment. So that is our next department is Mr. Schultz, our Deputy Superintendent. He's over Administrative Services, and he will go through his glows and grows.
All right, good, good evening once again. So our three glows, I've been in, I guess I've been in this department for, since March. So when the pandemic started was my, was about my second week in Administrative Services. So, and there were some glows and grows about that, too, that we can talk about later. But as far as glows of the department, they're an amazing team. I know I mentioned that to, to some of us and our, some of you in our board member orientation about the work that they do. But one of the three areas I want to highlight is program choice and how it has grown over the years. There are six, currently, there are 16 programs in 31 schools. Since 2013, and that was seven years ago, we have grown from six program schools to 31. So that's a pretty exponential growth. Again, I can't take credit for any of that. It's all the great work of the team that was there. And then currently, I have Alan Samansky, who is leading that team, and she's kind of spread between two departments. She works on the, the program and the planning side of it, and Administrative Services, and there's enrollment and all that that goes along with that. But then she also works hand-in-hand on the curriculum instruction side of it. So if you think about STEM and International Baccalaureate and Dual Immersion, those are all very curricular and, you know, teaching strategy focused. So she has to work really split between two departments, and she does a wonderful job with that. There are currently 2,800 students that choose programs, programs outside of their schools. So we have students really going across the county to different schools to really go after a, an area that they're very passionate about, that they're interested in. And then we have approximately 12,775 students that are participating in choice, either within their own school or outside of their own school district. And then, so the, you know, during the 20, since 2013, again, the enrollment diversity in those programs have increased. And we've gone from a choice enrollment of about 1,800 to what we have today at almost 13,000. So, and I know even as a parent of, of, my, my own eldest daughter has took advantage of that program, and it really turned out great for her personally. So just in a little advertisement for everybody. So the application deadline for the 2122 school year is December 18th. So we still have a, a couple of weeks, about 11 days for that application deadline. So make sure, and as an advertisement to everyone watching, and then hopefully that watches again online, December 18th is the deadline. And then notifications will go out in the first week of February. So again, notifications will go out first week of February. And then we reopen again in April for kindergarten enrollment. So as you know, we begin to have kindergartners enroll, and then we'll reopen that choice option. We save seats for kindergartners as they come in to the district and enroll. Couple, well, I'll just, you know, in the last, gosh, three years, 19 programs have been added. And again, just exponential growth. And those, I have that list if you, if you care to look at that and can send that to you. Another area of grow that we have is student safety and well-being. And this is, this is an area that you really, you have to think about. You don't want to think about all the potential things that could happen in schools. But we have to think about that. And I will tell you that our district is a model around the state for that. And those, those of you, I know Ms. Carpenter knows that well. I know she takes her school safety very seriously and has been to many state conventions about that. And we appreciate her support on the, on the Safety Committee that we have. So we definitely have, it's one of those things that we don't want to think about, but we have a great team and a great plan in place. So part of that is the partnerships that we have. And really, that's probably accentuated most through the Safety Committee that we have. So we've got Emergency Services Team are on there. So that includes our emergency, county emergency personnel, law enforcement, Fire Department. RCCC is on that team. And then we also have school administrators. We have board members that are on that team as well. So it's really a high-functioning team. And really, just about everybody shows up every time that we meet once a month on that. And that's really to discuss the things that we're planning to do, things like the school safety checks that you see next on there and the audits. So with those school safety checks and audits, we have random metal detector screenings that we do for student and student bookbag checks as part of that. And that's, you know, we can't do that every day. I know a lot of people say, whoa, your solution is just make everybody go through a metal detector. Well, if you've ever tried getting 1,700 kids through metal detectors, a very, probably a very difficult thing to do, and would take a lot of instructional time away. But one of the ways to, to, you know, keep students on their toes, so to speak, and do random, we do those random checks, metal detector screenings, and bookbag checks. Also, things like in those checks and audits, we look at their black box procedures. So if they have to get out of the building, they have this black box that they take, take information with them. There are evacuation plans. We address bullying through, through this work, hallway procedures, staff knowledge of protocols, so knowing what to do in an emergency situation is important. We also ask the students, make sure that they know what we do. So when we go in to do a school audit, we'll ask teachers, what do you do when such and such happens? We'll ask, we'll interview students, what do you do when such and such happens? And that's part of the audit and the feedback that schools get as part of, as part of the preparation that they make for their schools. And then we also have a pretty extensive camera system, camera systems at our schools. And then we also examine door locks, gate locks, you know, things like that, to make sure that the building is secure, as secure as it can be. And then we also look at our drills and procedures. And those are things that, you know, old people like me think about as fire drills, but it's much more extensive like that. It's, you know, fire drills, tornado drills, it's evacuations, bomb threats, all of those things that you think about bus evacuations. We practice a bus evacuation drill as well. And then lastly, in terms of our safety planning and student well-being, is the reporting and monitoring. And so we have online monitoring systems. We, we have an anonymous tip line. We have a bullying and harassment link that students can go to to report that. We have the lobby guard system in each one of our buildings. So you, you obviously have all experienced that if you've been into a school building where you check in through the lobby guard system. And then we have our entrances are fortified at our schools as well. And, and we know that none, none of those things are perfect, but they're in place to slow, slow people down that intend to do harm for our staff and students. So, and then the next thing is the, the specialized instructional support personnel model. We call it CISP, and I can barely pronounce CISP. It's actually easy for me to pronounce the longer name of it. But if you think about the student safety and well-being, that's kind of like the, the physical side of, the hard side of the protocol, the procedure. And when we switch to CISP, and again, this is something we've been recognized around the state for, that's the mental health side of it. And we really have to have both. We have to have a, a strong fortified buildings that protect students, but then we have to have adults that protect students and help them protect themselves. And that's really where CISP comes in. And so if you think about, what you see in that diagram up there is really, is mental health in the middle. And then what you see is the, the, the school counselor, the school social worker, the school psychologist. And we are fortunate enough in Cabarrus County that every school has a, a school nurse. And, and we're very thankful and grateful for that. And they become part of that mental health team. And then Larry, if you don't mind giving it a click, and another thing that most school districts do not have is our school resource officers. So now school resource officers, they are also involved in the mental health of students. So we don't want, you know, students to, to think of police officers as the big bad police officers. We want them to, see them as a, as another solution in that mental health wheel. So we're fortunate enough to have the school nurses and school resource officers that work together with school counselors, with school psychologists, and school social workers. And that's an amazing team that we have that work together for the mental health and the good of the students. And that's really where all of their jobs overlap. So we're really super grateful for that. And again, they, our team gets asked and has to turn down invitations to present on this model around the state and around the nation. So in fact, we do have two appointments in March that we're going to, we are going to do some presenting, because we just feel like it's an obligation that we have to, to share some of that with districts. But, so we're, we're really proud of the work that, and that's, I'll just name them, John Basilis and Amy Louter and Amy Jewell serve on, on, as the leads for that and do a tremendous job in our district. So with that, we'll go on to the grows. And the grows really, again, it's a, it's a glow on the CISP side. But then if you think about like all the mental health needs that there are in our district and in our, in our community and in our world, we just don't have enough of what we need to support the mental health needs in our, in our schools. And, and, you know, now we're not alone in that. So up here, what we have are the, the national organization recommendations in terms of the ratio. So what, you know, for example, so for school counselors, the national recommendation is one counselor for every 250 students. And, and then our state average is 1 to 353. And then we're at 1 at 359. So right at the state average. I'd sure like to be closer to the 250 than the, than the state average on that one. But we're right about the state average. And, and the same pattern kind of exists with the school social workers and school psychologists. However, we are better than the state average in our school, social worker, and our school psychologist staffing, not anywhere near the national recommendations. But that is always, will always be an ongoing request. You'll see, if you serve on any of our budget teams, you'll see that's an ongoing request that we have in our budget requests every school year. So with that, I think I'm, I'm turning it over to Mr. Legrand, correct?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Schultz. We appreciate that. I think next, if we can go to the next slide, Larry, is Auxiliary Services. Mr. Legrand is our Assistant Superintendent of Auxiliary Services, is going to go through some of the highlight areas from his area and... Wait and see if he's on his way. Wait and see if he's on his way.
Hey, can I say one thing, Dr. Lauter?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to commend Mr. Schultz on giving the credit to the workers that work in his department. That's pretty special, and I'm sure they appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. So as I said, Mr. Legrand is over auxiliary service. He has several different departments. He'll kind of go through those, some areas that those guys are working on, certainly some big areas of success.
Thank you, Dr. Lauter. Good evening, members of the board. I'm John Legrand. As, as Dr. Lauter just mentioned, I'm the assistant superintendent of our auxiliary services department. And I'd like to present a few examples of the outstanding work taking place in our department, starting with the construction of seven new school buildings within the past five years. And you can see on the table, um, in order, starting with Odell Elementary, Mount Pleasant Middle, Early College of Technology, Royal Oaks Elementary, Early College of Technology, and just recently Hickory Ridge Elementary and Wes Cabarrus High open this fall for our students. In addition, we have an eighth school that is now under construction, um, the newly named Roberta Road Middle School, um, that with a target open date of fall of 2022. So we're very proud of these buildings. I do want to acknowledge the quality work being done by Tim Lauter, Brian Kohn, um, as they build these facilities and, and work with these projects. Um, it's really incredible to see, um, the, the, uh, school buildings that are built and the amount of school buildings that have been built and, and opened in that amount of time. So just a kudos to our staff. Um, the next glow I want to mention is that as we go about opening new buildings, our facilities management department works to maintain our existing ones. So, uh, they are in charge of the maintenance of over 6.75 million square feet and 2,000 acres. To put that square footage in perspective, that would be 45 Super Walmarts, um, it would be five Concord Mill malls, and approximately 3,300 single-family homes. So, um, just a, a mammoth task for, uh, our, our facilities management crew on, on a daily basis. If you look at the acreage, 2,000 acres, we're talking about over 1,500 football fields, um, that they must maintain, um, on a daily basis. So, um, kudos to those guys. Um, CCS has also partnered with the county to continue to do major repairs and projects in our existing schools, such as over the fast, past five years, six full roof replacements, two complete HVAC replacements, and one complete electrical service replacement. So a big credit to our FMD director, Chuck Taylor, and his whole FMD team for the essential work being done on our facilities, um, on a daily basis. And the third glow I want to mention has been a more recent one, um, is the implementation of our district-wide one-to-one device assignment for all K-12 students. Um, before the pandemic hit back in March, um, there were plans being made to move in that direction, um, but as the pandemic hit, we were, uh, we had to, we had to move our timeline, and we had to speed up our timeline, adjust it so that we could get, uh, Chromebooks out to our students so that they could engage in remote learning, uh, within about a week, um, from our school's closing, if, if not even quicker, um, last March. Uh, now that that is done, we started out this school year, um, with, uh, device assignment, and now every student in K-12 is assigned a Chromebook, um, and, uh, so that they can be engaged both at home and school. Um, doing so has opened up new possibilities for student learning, um, during our current circumstances in Plan B, um, but it's also going to be beneficial as we move post-COVID. Um, and, and one-to-one device assignment is here to stay. Um, I don't think it's, it's gonna go anywhere, um, once COVID is over, is something that's been very beneficial for the, the students and staff of our district. Um, I do want to mention that, uh, you know, our, our whole technology team, you know, that was, again, another mammoth task back to, back in March, but they're continuing to make it happen, as well as our school-based staff, um, our ITFs at each school site, and our chief technology officer, Dane Hughes, um, all deserve credit for making sure that that happens for our students. If we're looking at grows, um, our main focus is, as the department has continued to expand with the county growth, um, while successfully maintaining what we already have in the current facilities and the operations that we run. And, and by including in that operations is school nutrition, um, Kids Plus, and, uh, and also, uh, transportation. So, uh, there's two major categories, the construction of school buildings, new and replacement, and this will continue to be an issue as our, as our county continues to grow. In the near term, the new, the new middle school project is ongoing, but we're also looking at a possibility of replacement buildings at the aging facilities at Arbrown-McAllister Elementary and Northwest Cabarrus High School, um, at sometime in the future. I do want to mention that the county has been a great partner with these efforts, and we will continue to work with them to explore possibilities of future projects. Um, the other category is the deferred maintenance. You heard Ms. Klutz talk about that briefly, but of course, these are items that exist in buildings that currently need attention. Examples of this are HVAC systems, roof replacements, electrical systems, and parking lots. So we've got forty, with 42 different sites, there are many of these items to address, and this is a continuous effort that we will address each year with help from the county by prioritizing and funding through our budget process. Overall, we look forward to continuing to provide the facilities and the services needed for our students to thrive academically at each of our school sites, and we thank the board and the county for support in those areas.
Thank you, Mr. Legrand. We appreciate everything you've done there and going over that overview. Um, so thank you at this time, and I think we'll go to the next slide, and I think our last department is Dr. Crystal Hill, who is in charge of curriculum and instruction. And she's gonna come in and do an overview of that, do some glows and grows, um, in that department. So, welcome and thank you, Dr. Hill. Um, and we will look at curriculum and instruction.
Good evening. Hi, Ms. Grimsley, Mr. Farr, members of the board. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you today about curriculum instruction. Um, I like to refer to it as teaching and learning, and, um, I'm just so excited to have the opportunity just to share some things with you today. So for our glows, um, we are super excited to share, and you all have heard this before, but our student achievement increases over the last three years. I think it just tells a lot about the work that our teachers are doing each and every day in the schools. So, um, right now, um, based on 2019 data, 94.4% of our schools met or exceeded growth. And that is up because in 2017, we had 64%, and in 2018, we had 89%. So from 2018 to 2019, we have a 5.4% increase. So I just think that's exciting. It means that our students are growing each and every day, um, when they're come and they're experiencing, um, teaching and learning with our fantastic teaching staff. In terms of, uh, the number and the percent of schools that have exceeded growth, um, we are up in that area as well. As of 2019, we had 63.9% of our schools that exceeded growth. In 2017, we had 25%, and in 2018, we had 39%. So from year to year, that was a 24.9% increase. So exciting about that. Um, the next thing that I'd like to share as a glow is, uh, really, um, recent, and it was in response to the pandemic. Obviously, um, I've never taught in an environment where we were in a pandemic, none of our staff had. And so it was a really new experience and frustrating experience for teachers, not only in Cabarrus County, but across the nation and across the world, um, having to face something and, and figure out how to do things new. But out of that has come a lot of innovation, um, that we are proud of. So one of the things that we recognized, um, pretty early on, after the spring emergency closures, and as we realized we were going into this thing, um, for the long haul, it seemed like, um, that we needed to provide some professional learning for our teachers to figure out exactly how to navigate, uh, this new environment. So one of the things that we did is we provided, it's called the Distance Learning Playbook, and we did a kickoff with Dr. Doug Fisher. And Dr. Fisher is a researcher, um, he is an educator, he, um, is a professor at San Diego State University, and he's also a current practitioner. So he himself, um, teaches part-time, high school students, and, um, had been teaching in this, um, environment since the emergency school closures back, um, in the spring. Um, and as, as I mentioned, he's also a researcher. So he got together with some other researchers, John Hattie, which is an educational researcher, and wrote, um, an extraordinary text in a really short amount of time with some really practical strategies and things that teachers can do to reach students at a distance. And so some of the work that he did, um, was, in his research, was reaching out to teachers across the country to see their experiences, did lots of filming with that. So anyway, we were able to get Doug to come in, and he actually did sessions, he did, uh, seven different sessions. All of our teachers participated in that. Um, it was absolutely amazing to have 500 teachers on a call, if you can imagine, but, um, 500 teachers on a call with one presenter, extremely interactive. We got rave reviews and decided that we needed to build upon that. So we had the kickoff with Dr. Fisher, and then we keep, continue to have ongoing modules, um, provided during the school year. So, um, after the kickoff, we provided modules three, four, and five, and we will, um, offer additional modules, six, seven, and eight in the spring. Um, what I'd like to share with you is Dr. Lauter mentioned earlier, that we have about 2,400 teachers in Cabarrus County schools, and we had over 3,000 participants. So what that means is that our teachers participated, our administrators participated, any instructional staff were involved, invited, teacher assistants, anyone that has anything to do with teaching and learning had the opportunity to attend, and we had over 3,000 participants. So I think that, uh, speaks to the level of professionalism and care and concern of our instructional staff. So that's one of our grows. Um, the other grow, it, glow, excuse me, is, um, also very recent. We recently implemented Canvas as our learning management system. We may, we call that an LMS, and that was extremely important. Um, it obviously was birthed out of, uh, the response to the pandemic, but what Canvas does, it's a single platform that we've provided for all of our, uh, students. So last, last spring and the emergency closures, and we were on lots of different, uh, uh, platforms. We had some teachers using Schoology, we had some using Canvas, we had some using Google Classroom, we were kind of all over the place. We quickly realized that we needed to level the playing field for students and for parents to make sure that we were providing one consistent platform. And Canvas has been absolutely fantastic, and actually since, um, we started using Canvas, the state has adopted Canvas as a learning management, uh, platform for the state. So it's also really nice, so now that we can, um, share courses and things like that with other districts across the state. Um, Canvas has also been great for, um, other areas, such as driver's education. Um, all facets of the organization are now using Canvas, so that is definitely a glow from our department.
Dr. Hill, may I interrupt you just for a moment?
Yes.
I know that the new board members had their orientation, and most of the board members understand what that is. Could you, just for the general public, since they're listening, kind of explain what Canvas really is?
Sure. Great. Yeah, thank you. Absolutely. So, um, uh, what Canvas is, it's a learning management system. And so, um, what it is, is it's, it's on, it's a, a cloud-based application, and it's a platform. So if you think about, um, I think the best way to frame it is almost like a website. So, um, it, it functions almost as a website, but it's a place where the, uh, teachers can organize content and post content. So every day, um, when students are, um, in their remote session, and even when they're face-to-face, um, before they would go into a classroom and the teacher would pass out papers. Now the content is organized on Canvas or a web, it has a website feel where they can go in, they can see what their schedule is, they can see, um, assignments. Some of our teachers, um, post assignments in modules, so they may post the module, so students now have an opportunity to see what's going to happen over the next week. Um, they can submit assignments through Canvas, um, teachers can grade things through Canvas. Uh, Canvas speaks directly to Power School, which is our, um, grading system and attendance. So those two things speak to each other. When students turn things in, teachers grade them in Canvas, it automatically feeds into Power School. So it's just, um, it's just a platform and an organization system that our teachers use and our students use to communicate back and forth and to, um, complete assignments and provide content.
So the reason I even asked is because I know it was, I think, a little confusing that Canvas has been the indicator used for attendance, but that's not really where kids log on to receive instruction or interact with the teachers.
It is.
Which is Microsoft Teams.
Correct. Microsoft Teams is embedded in Canvas, yes.
Right.
Microsoft Teams is where they access their live instruction.
Right.
But the way that they get to Microsoft Teams is to go through Canvas.
I think that's, the information has been a little confusing for a lot of people involved, because I think the majority of people understood, once they're on Canvas, and I'm not, you know, you'll, you'll need to speak to this, it's not my expertise, but just because you log into Canvas, you still have to log into Microsoft Teams. It doesn't automatically put you in Microsoft Teams, correct?
That's correct.
So the student truly does have to log into Microsoft Teams to be a part of that interactivity with the teacher and receive instruction. So just because they log into Canvas, and it's, they say, I'm here, and they're clicked for attendance, that doesn't mean they're receiving instruction in Microsoft Teams if they don't log in again.
Okay, so I think what you're referring to is, um, information that I sent, uh, several weeks ago, and then I also sent it to you this past Friday, um, which is attendance, which is a completely different conversation, um, than this. But to, to answer your question, uh, the State Board of Education, because of the pandemic, uh, the way that we took attendance before is kids would come to school, and the, the teacher will call out the name, Laura here, Holly here, Keisha here, Rob here, Chris here. Well, now that the teacher can't do that anymore, because of the pandemic, we can't be together, students had to, um, have opportunities to show their presence, right? Because it wasn't face-to-face. So basically, what the State Board of Education said, along with the, uh, our legislators, is you all need to provide multiple opportunities for students to demonstrate that they are present, right? That they're interactive. So there's lots of ways that you can do that. Uh, you can demonstrate attendance through, um, participating in live Microsoft Teams. You can demonstrate attendance by going onto Canvas and completing assignments by 11:59 PM. You can demonstrate attendance by logging into Canvas and navigating the content. You can demonstrate attendance by reaching out to the teacher and saying, I wasn't able to log into Canvas today. So, uh, the intent was not to penalize students because of the pandemic, because we know that we have students that are in a wide range of situations right now. So, um, that is, um, that, that's, that's state mandated. Now, I would be shocked if there is one student of our 32,000 students that don't know, um, as of today, that the way that they access their content is to go into Canvas and click on Teams and join live. If they don't know that, we are in big trouble, because that has been communicated, um, well before August 17th. Um, I have personally gone in and logged in and counted the number of students that are in a, in a class in a live session. Um, I've shared, shared that information, um, with the board, um, as requested, and the number of students that were in live sessions was quite high. Um, but as I shared with you all, and the call went out tonight, so for those that are listening, you may have gotten a phone call, um, during this presentation, that we are changing our attendance, um, guidelines, and that will be effective, um, January 4th for early colleges and January 19th for our traditional schools.
And I'm not gonna continue this, but just, I guess for clarification, I think some of the information that was out there is, there were students that were clicking into Canvas, saying, I'm here, and then clicking off and not participating in.
Oh, absolutely.
So the, the disadvantage to that is they get a, they don't get, the parents or the student doesn't get a phone call that says, hey, your student didn't click on Canvas, and so they're not in attendance. But they could click onto Canvas and click off and never go into Microsoft Teams where the actual interaction and instruction.
Yes, so let me, yes, so you're correct. But let me separate two separate things. There's attendance, there's engagement in teaching and learning. Pre-COVID, children came to school every single day and did absolutely nothing. Perfect attendance and came to school and did nothing. That happens. And Cabarrus County schools, happened when I was a principal, happens everywhere. Now, it's not the masses, but it happens. So what we had to do is make sure that we were not penalizing students for, based on engagement, based on attendance. That'd be a violation of State Board of Education policy. So that's what we had to make sure that no students, but we've made some changes, we've made some tweaks. Again, one thing that I think this board, um, and since we have new board members, I'm excited to say this, that Cabarrus County Schools is doing some things that across the state, most districts are not doing, because we have been able to overcome so many barriers as a result of this pandemic. So I'm not aware of any other school district right now that, well, maybe one, um, that has provided one-to-one technology for every one of our students. We have provided internet access for every one of our students. We have provided internet access for every one of our students. We have provided live instruction for every one of our students. We have basically eliminated all of the barriers that exist. So we've, because of that, we've been able to adjust our attendance. We didn't have all of those things in place on August 17th. But we're continuously learning, we're continuously growing, we're continuously, continuously listening. And based on the feedback that we've gotten, we've gone back and made some changes to our attendance. So that won't be the, that won't be the, you know, that won't happen anymore. Now, I'm sure that there are still students out there that will figure out how to still get 100% attendance. But at the end of the day, the most important thing, you know, and I try to go back, attendance is very tightly correlated to engagement and performance. However, just because you attend does not mean that you're going to get good grades and, and things like that. So just, you know, we might still have students that are logging on or saying they're watching a recording, but they're not learning. My point being in all of this is that our teachers know where each and every one of our students are. Because they still have the responsibility of teaching them, they have the responsibility of assessing them. So even if they add 100% attendance, it's going to show up somewhere. And so it's the responsibility of the teacher, of the SIS team, like Mr. Schultz talked about. You know, we have lots of crossover in our department, the SIS team, the school administrators, to work together and look at each individual child and say, "Hey, Johnny has perfect attendance, but wait a minute. I can't get him to do a read aloud, I can't assess him with his eye ready." We're struggling. So the, again, the same student that came to school every single day and had a perfect attendance and did nothing, we can't just say, "Oh, he has perfect attendance, so he must be learning." We all know that it takes much more than just attending to actually learn. Mm-hmm, absolutely. But one thing that I did want to say about Canvas, I'm glad that you asked me that question because I forgot my, one of my notes, is that we actually have a parent observer account. So it's a great opportunity to advertise that. So parents, if you're listening, if you do not have a parent observer account, your teacher and your ITF can connect you with that right away. That observer account allows you to see absolutely everything that's in that teacher's Canvas course. It allows you to see what assignments are there, it allows you to see what assignments are due. It allows you to see when the student has submitted the assignment or didn't submit the assignment. So there shouldn't be any of this going back and forth of, "Well, I submitted that," you know, there is no dog, the dog ate my homework anymore, right? Because it's submitted and has a timestamp and the parent can go right in and see exactly what the student's doing. Okay, so grows. One of our grows is, I think the most important thing that we do, the most exciting part of my job is graduation day. We get to see all those students that walk across the stage. And we start serving some of our students as early as three years old. So what I always think about when kids walk across that stage or when they drive across the finish line as they did last year or this coming year is, did we do everything that we need to do for every one of our students? And so I think that's something that we continue to work on, right? Because no matter how great, how well things are going, to Ms. Grimsley's point, we're not there yet, right? We're not at 100%. And I guess the reality is that if we were, we would probably cease to exist as an organization, right? So we always had to be teaching and learning, there's always going to be a student to grab, there's always going to be room to grow. So that's one of our grows. And the way that we're going to do that is to implement our career continuum. So Mr. Parker talked with you all a little bit about that in November. And so I think that's some of the most important work that we do. Really tapping into students as early as fifth grade to start seeing what they're interested in, what they like to do, exposing them to careers, exposing them to post-secondary education. I think a lot of times people will say, "Well, every kid doesn't need to go to college." That is a true statement. But everyone has to have post-secondary education. So how are we preparing students for post-secondary education, for career in college? Is something that I'm very passionate about and something that we're continuing to work on. And we are also going to ensure that all students grow and move towards proficiency. We do know that when students show up to kindergarten, when they're five years old, all excited about school, we all know that children come to school with different experiences and different level of preparedness for learning. So it's our job to make sure that we get students to exactly where they need to be. So growth is really important, one of the most important things that we do. But at the end, we've got to get them on grade level or above. So we're always pushing them forward. We want to make sure that we're increasing participation in our honors courses and our CCP, which is our Career and College Promise courses, and our Advanced Placement courses. And then we also want to make sure that we're increasing on the number of students that are completers for their career and technical education pathways. So again, tapping into what they're interested in, getting them on that path and allowing them to finish successfully. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Just want to say how much we appreciate all the work of your department and everything that you've worked on. I just want to say from my perspective, if you ask me what I'm most proud of as the superintendent, it is the five individuals that just came up and presented to you. Our assistant superintendents and our chief financial officer are absolute rock stars across the state of North Carolina. There's no team that matches up with those five individuals. I promise you, on a regular basis, every single week, somebody calls me and says, "Can your chief financial officer please call and help my chief financial officer with this issue? I have a new HR assistant superintendent. Will Ms. Jones please kind of call? Can they call and ask them questions?" Mr. Schultz mentioned, can your SIS team, can your deputy superintendent help us with that same model that we're looking at? With Mr. Legrand, you know, can you, can our department help with transportation, how you guys are budgeting, how you're doing Wi-Fi buses? Literally every single week. And just to kind of personify that with Dr. Hill today, our new state superintendent, Catherine Truitt, called today. She's calling superintendents and I spent about 45 minutes with her on the teams call. And we talked about a lot of things across the state and our district. And then when I mentioned Dr. Hill, she said, "Oh, wait a minute, Dr. Hill," who's on the reading committee, which is on the state committee with the state school board, and said, "I know Dr. Hill, so can I call her? Do I have your permission to call her? I need to talk to her about some things." So that group of individuals leads our district and in my, my view are, you know, again, rock stars and really the most important part of our success here as the district. So I know we spent a lot of time there. Again, just trying to give you some overviews. I know it's a lot of information, especially for new board members. What I would suggest is maybe that if you have questions in any of those areas, you can email them to us. We'll try to email and pick you back up within the interest of time. I think if you have a super pressing question that you need, I think we said wait out in the hall, they're kind of socially distanced, but I know it's taken a while. So whatever, Madam Chair, you think would be the best thing to do. Because again, I know that's broad and we may not can answer all the questions tonight.
Absolutely, and I totally agree. And I'm thinking, board members, unless you have something tonight that you really think that you need response to, that maybe we can do just that, email Dr. Louder, copy Tim and myself on it, and we'll just take it from there. I, I think it was great for the general public to see that structure and how the process works with the Cabarrus County school system. So I think that's great, great, great presentation. Does anybody have anything they really need to ask or respond to tonight? Ms. Sandage?
Sorry about that. I didn't hear anything about EC.
I'm sorry, you didn't hear anything about what?
Our exceptional children's program.
Oh, the except, where that falls?
Yeah, I would just say the exceptional children's program falls under Dr. Hill and curriculum instruction. And to be honest with you, every area, all five of our areas tonight, had areas that they didn't necessarily touch on. So again, very big and very scoped. That's certainly something we can, you know, present or go in depth. If you'll just kind of ask us the area that you want to do that, we can certainly answer there. But again, lots and lots of areas. We tried just to hit highlights and some things that we're in the middle of working on currently.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Sandage? No. You go ahead and just email whatever is important to you. Anyone else have anything in particular for tonight? Okay, great. So moving on, we're going to now go down to discussion items. And 8.01, it states the COVID-19 update for the board chair. So I guess really what I would like to say is, we, we just spent an enormous amount of time listening to how much time and effort that's placed in realignment and the breakdown of how Cabarrus County Schools operates and the complexity of that. One of the things that I've been thinking about is, I really feel like it's time that we have a task force for COVID, the process of it. I know that Dr. Louder has a team that he works with, within Cabarrus County school systems. But I think it's time, after this length, that we incorporate different stakeholders, bring some people to the table that's been impacted, you know, how things have been going, what are we doing right, what are we doing wrong? I know that's done internally, but I think it's truly time to expand that and to start adding people from the outside that can give us some good feedback. Parents, teachers, retired teachers, I would even like to see some students. I'm sure we might even be able to have an opinion from our intern who's in the room with us, Ms. Finley Edwards. Thank you for being here. I just think it's time that we put something together that starts towards an emergency plan. I would really like to see that take shape and for us to begin that process of looking at what that may entail as we move through this, because we know it's not going away. We're still dealing with it, we're going to still continue with dealing with closing schools, keeping schools open, reopening schools, going in and out of quarantines, any future issues that we may have to deal with. And I think it's just a really good opportunity to take something that has been extremely challenging and maybe do something productive out of it. So with that being said, and I don't want us to spend a whole lot of time on it tonight, but I don't need emotion or any action taken, but I would like to have consensus from the board to give Vice Chair Fur and myself permission or the authority to meet with Dr. Louder and some of his group to discuss what that might look like or to put something skeleton-wise together and bring it back to our business meeting next Monday. With that being said, I'd like to give each one of you a couple of minutes to respond to that. And I will start with Ms. Carpenter.
Excuse me. Boy, this thing's loud. Hold on a second. Is that better? Madam Chairman, I'm kind of confused because one thing, we've got a safety committee put in place, which was mentioned tonight, which is made up of the, a lot of, well, it's made up of the sheriff, of the police department, of risk management, of the, all the school principals from high school, middle school. I mean, about everybody you could, you mentioned. We, I mean, about everybody. The only thing you would have to do, you could take the majority of those people and if you wanted to add, say, teachers or students, I mean, they could make up that committee. I, I think you're trying to reinvent the wheel. And you say, "Well, you don't have a plan." Basically, we have a plan. The only thing that really needs to be done is this board just needs to approve that metrics that we have seen. The yellow, red, green, that just needs to be approved by this board. Because it lays out a very good plan. And I think that you're basically trying to do something that doesn't need to be done. We have got a plan. We've been following a plan, have we not, Dr. Louder? We have got a plan in place.
Yes, ma'am, certainly do.
And so you're trying to invent a wheel to say, "Look what I've done." We don't need to do that. And again, we've got a safety committee and that's the first thing we discuss. It's a safety meeting every month. And I send this board the agenda every time we have a safety committee. And that is one of the first things we discuss. And so I, I think it's unnecessary to do that.
Well, I appreciate your opinion. As you know, I always have, as we've discussed many different topics. I will say to you, that was one of the groups or committees that I thought would be appropriate to add to this. I don't think you have any parents that sit on that, correct?
No, and that's why I'm saying we could always, excuse me, that's why I'm saying that's something we could add, you know, from the safety committee.
But then, and that brings back my point, we have to create somewhat a new committee, correct?
Well, from the safety committee, they could pull out a subcommittee.
You can incorporate, I'm not saying that. I'm, I'm saying we do have some great committees in place already. Dr. Louder CNI group, the safety group. I think there are many committees, subcommittees that we have in place that we do not have to recreate the wheel. I didn't say that. But I do think we need to expand what we've already done. And in order really to get more feedback of what we've been doing. If we have our plan in place, we need to get that out there. That could be the structure piece of it. But I, we put a lot of time and effort into realignment and you know that. There's a lot more stakeholders at the table that get to have a say in that before it comes to the board for a recommendation. And you know that as well. So my thought is, this is my opinion, it's my idea for our board to start with something more productive, to work with what do those metrics look like, everybody has an opinion, how do we use them? This, this is a new board. We need to see how important it is of all those different pieces and parts of that that we've all been a part of. It's my idea. I'm throwing it out there. I think it would be a good opportunity to start with some feedback from where we started to where we are to where we go. So with that said, I appreciate your opinion and I'll move on to Ms. Zettcock.
Thank you. I think it's a good idea because if we look at some of what will happen if we go to Plan A at some point, we do have to have a plan where we have breakouts in certain schools. Are we going to just shut that school down? Are we going to shut down classrooms? I mean, something that is really more detailed that goes into what the system would look like when we do go to Plan A and we bring kids back in, because we know that kids are going to still can have COVID. You know, teachers may get COVID and we have to monitor that. And so to be detailed about what that plan would look like, I think that would be an excellent, the task force would be great.
Thank you. Mr. Fur?
I'm in favor of looking at something like that. Like us new board members, we haven't seen the plan that Ms. Carpenter was, was talking about. So, and like was presented to us before with the redistricting, we got, we have such a committee. And I don't know, and it's not near as important as this, as COVID. So we, we have to figure out a way to get our kids back in school as soon as possible, hopefully early January. Just like Mr. Schultz mentioned earlier about the mental health that the resource officers and the psychiatrists provided for our children. You know, they can't provide it if they're not at school. And that's, that's the population that really concerns me more than anything. So whatever, we need to be on the same page. We can't operate like, like the board did the last year with the COVID. We can't embarrass the community. We've got to make sound decisions, which to me will include people, stakeholders, as Ms. Grimsley alluded to. So whatever it takes that we can positively work on to make this happen is what we need to do. We have so many, this school system has so many positives that we need to, to present to people. That needs to be out and about in the, in the community. Because it is, to me, it's one of the, you know, best school systems in the state where I'd have never came back. But honestly, the last six, eight months is, you know, it hadn't went very well. So whatever we can do to at least let the public know that we are trying to do something positive to get their kids back in school. And we also need to look at, and y'all may have already done this, at-risk teachers, that's a concern. I mean, I'm not naive to think that that's not an issue. And I don't know what y'all discussed about, about that. It may be, maybe nothing we can do. But we need to seriously look at everything. And it's a new board, so to me, this committee's not a bad idea.
Thank you. Mr. Walter?
So what is the goal of the committee?
I'm sorry?
What's the goal?
The goal, an emergency plan.
A plan as far as metrics and things of that nature.
Goals and objectives that move us to an emergency plan. You know what, I don't have any, when I say it's a skeleton thought tonight, it truly is. That would be decided by the group, you know. I think right now I would just like to make sure that we all agree that it's a good way to move forward and to add people that have been impacted by this situation that we've been navigating through for nine months. And we do have some, some good committees, subcommittees, you know, Ms. Carpenter, you're correct. I think it would be great to incorporate the safety committee and, and many others that Dr. Louder has already comprised. But we need to actually expand that to involve people that haven't been a part of that and haven't had a say but have been highly impacted by it. And that's really my, my goal.
Okay. We've gotten hundreds of emails from public and teachers giving their inputs. We have that. I'm not sure what difference or what other additional information that we're going to actually get and the timetable for it. If, as Ms. Carpenter says, Health Alliance has some chart that they want us to move to Plan C because the cases are, were high last week. Well, like, cases are a lot higher last week than they are today. They're going to be higher next week than they are today as well. So timetable, I mean, if there's So timetable, I mean, if there's a, if it's an emergency and there's a rush to, to come up with this, it seems like it's just something that would take a long, longer time than you really, you have if we've got a really, they want us to act now, so, or at least evaluate it now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Sandich.
Sure, so I've said a lot about this prior to coming on to this board. I truly think that our community should be involved in the decisions that are made by our board, and we can only do that when we have liaisons represented from each entity that's being affected by the decisions that we're making. So before today, I wrote a few things down, and I don't know if I've got some time to say that, but I just wanted to initially communicate that we are all a team, and I feel like if, when we work together, we can do anything, and if there are several people at the table, that just gives us more of the opportunity to actually meet the objective and make sure that our children are being served. We have all the experts that I feel like we need in this building, we just heard from several of them, and Dr. Louder is right, they are experts and they are, they know what we need, and we just got to put that in place. Prior to being here on this board, I heard from parents, teachers, people in the community, and they don't understand our plan. With that being said, I ask, you know, myself, what is our plan? What are we doing? What suggests that we move to Plan A? What suggests that we move to Plan B or we stay in Plan B? What suggests we goes to, we go to Plan C? And I want us to understand, you know, what the parameters are that's being set by the government and being set by the Cabarrus Health Alliance, and you know, how can we stay within those but also make sure that we keep our children and our faculty stay safe? Oh goodness, it's hard for me to talk with this mask on, but I understand the mandate. The other thing that I was thinking, you know, through all of this, I've listened, I've watched all the board meetings, I have yet to see our teachers surveyed, you know, how many of them are at risk, I think Tim pointed this out, how many of them are at risk, and what are we doing to make sure that we are keeping them safe? I have yet to see that. I think we need to have a location, and we may already have this, for all things COVID, our community has got to be aware of what we are doing because what we decide affects every single thing that happens in Cabarrus County. So our parents, our teachers, our students, they need to know where they can go to find out whatever question they have about COVID. I don't think that that's very clear, excuse me. I also think that we, this board, prior to, you know, all of this going on, we talked about the percentages that would determine what we do. Have we really done, have we really looked at the percentages and followed whatever metrics that we put in place that says, when we get to this percentage, this is what we're going to do? We haven't done that yet. So I would definitely like to see this school system get to a point where we're able to do what we say and say what we mean. So I definitely agree with what you're suggesting.
Great, thank you, Ms. Blackwell.
So I, I do agree with having a task force. I think this is something that we've done where I work in the past, when we have something that comes up, we will have either some sort of steering committee or a task force that brings all of the stakeholders to the table to look at the, to come up with what our goal is, so what is our goal? I mean, my, my goal, ultimate goal, and I think everybody else's ultimate goal is to get these kids back in school as soon as possible and do it safely. And so at this point, we do have wonderful committees, but the sole focus of this task force would be COVID. And I think during a pandemic like, like we've never seen before, I, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't have a task force that is solely based on COVID to help us achieve those goals, so I'm, I'm all for that.
I appreciate all of your comments, and when we talk about metrics and numbers, and I know all of you know this, and the new board members will soon learn it well, we get a ton of information continuously, and not that it is not good information, and Dr. Louder's group is really good about sending that out to us. We get things from the Health Alliance, we get things from the school system, we just get a ton of information, and there's always the decision of where, who do we follow, at what timeframe and what level? And that's a huge decision, and most of us all have a different opinion about that, and that's what makes this a little bit more difficult and challenging at times. So therefore, that's why I thought it was important. And we still do not have, I mean, yes, Mr. Walter, to your point, we get a ton of emails, but how are we using that information? You know, for every email we get about keep the schools closed or close the schools, we get ten, you know, four or five to keep them open. For every four or five that we get to keep them open, we'll get more that says, you know, safety's primary for the, and, and even though all those are very valid points, they're coming from whomever's being impacted. So I just think it's a really good opportunity to take our safety committee, absolutely, we cannot do anything without that, but it does involve a lot of other issues that they're dealing with in our school system, not just COVID. That was my whole point, to take that and expand some of those committees, add to it, bring the people in that are affected, and, you know, just to get some really good ideas about an emergency plan for the future. So with that being said, I would just like to get a consensus of the board to allow Mr. Farr and I to meet with Dr. Louder and have that discussion and just see, to bring back some ideas at the business meeting. Is everybody okay with that? Can everybody just raise their hand to give me an acknowledgement, we're all good? Okay, great, Ms. Carpenter, would you like to make another point?
Yes, I would. One thing I would like, because Dr. Louder did acknowledge we had a plan, I would like for him, if he could, to share that plan with our new board members so they have that in place, if you could do that.
Sure, so obviously, we have a COVID website which has all kinds of information, and I would encourage the board members who are saying that they are missing questions and answers to go to that website and then say, well, what's missing for that? I'm certainly not saying that there may not be holes or things that we need to improve, but I would say, go to the COVID website, find out what information that you think we need to have that's not there, and we'll certainly try to improve that. We do have, what's, what the acronym is a CHAC committee, which is Cabarrus Health Alliance and Cabarrus County Schools in Kannapolis, that is Kannapolis City School System, our school system, and the Cabarrus Health Alliance that has met long before Kannapolis started in school. That's where a lot of the safety issues that Ms. Carpenter refers to meet. So, for example, how we're going to lay out the schools, how we're going to socially distance, how we're going to tech temperatures, all of those things were part of that committee. So that really has been the main information source that we've used throughout this process. We also have two calls that we have each week with the Cabarrus Health Alliance on Monday mornings at nine o'clock. It's the community leader, so it's our city manager, county manager, county commissioners, the Cabarrus Health Alliance, the two school superintendents, and this past week, they've invited both of the board chairs to be a part of that. So now Ms. Grimsley is the new board chair, you will be, I assume tomorrow, invited to every Monday morning, be a part of that group. I don't know if you'll be able to attend or not, that'll be up to you. And then on Thursdays, it's the Cabarrus Health Alliance and just the two school systems. So Dr. Buckle and myself, and then all of our staff like HR, Mr. Schultz, all the group that athletics, Mr. Tyson's on there, Mr. Little Grand, transportation and school nutrition are all on there just to keep updated every week and find out what issues that either the Health Alliance is aware of, that we're aware of, that we're working on to kind of troubleshoot. So I would say, and I can't say that every single thing that you've mentioned here, or you may want elements of that that are not there, that's why I would say analyze that and see. We already have a pretty big infrastructure in place, so if there's something you want to add to that, I think there would be minimal amount of work to add to that, you know, it just depends. So there are, for a parent to be involved with that, there are some things that are confidential that a parent wouldn't necessarily be privy to in those calls, but it doesn't mean there wouldn't be aspects that they could be privy to. So those are, what I would say is just be clear and, you know, precise about what is it that's missing that we don't have, and then we'll try to figure out how to accommodate that.
I appreciate that, and you know, I get definitely, there are, there is information on those calls that is definitely confidential, but I don't see sharing that with maybe the COVID task force group. You know, that's information that would come through, but not so much as a disclosed confidentiality. And to me, that, the, the most important piece is, is kind of what we talked about the last meeting, that we need to drill it down. That's such a broad amount of information, and it covers Cabarrus County as a whole, it covers Kannapolis City Schools, you know, it covers charter schools, private schools, home schools, so that's such a broad amount of information. And I think the most feedback I get is, how do we know what's going on within Cabarrus County schools? You know, it's like I told you that one day, you know, we get, you know, all the daily, which is great, but there's no cumulative report that states, okay, for X weeks now, we've had, the numbers are here, and they were there, and these are the people that are now recovered and no longer in quarantine, but these people have went into quarantine. Are we having teacher shortages? Are we having sub-issues? I just think there's a lot of this that we haven't really addressed in the plan, and I think it would just, it's, it's time to me to start working on that piece of it. So I appreciate your input, and with that being said, I'm hearing that we have authorization and permission with the board to discuss this in a little more detail with Dr. Louder. Good, okay, great. So next, we will move on to...
Can I ask one question? So the, at this point in the board meeting, what we have been doing, one of the, I think one of the problems maybe that you guys are alluding to is there hasn't been consistency. Sometimes we've had division in the board, this group wants one thing, this group doesn't. The one thing that we have done consistently is to update you on the, the information, the cases, the positivity rate, hospitalizations. So Mr. Schultz does have that unless you guys don't want that information at this board meeting.
I think that's great information, there's nothing we don't want at this point.
Okay, Mr. Schultz, if, if you want to, again, this was information that we had, I think he may be coming down to present that, but the first emergency board meeting that this board called was on a Thursday, and so at that time, what the board asked us to do was to make sure that we just, because, you know, one of the things that we'll be asking as you guys are talking about, whatever form this task force may take, is that you be specific and say, well, what information is it that you want? What information that you want updated? Because it is a fluid game, right? Like, it's, so since we, school got out today until now, there are cases of students and teachers that we have been notified about. So you have to draw a line in the sand at some point and say, here's the time that we're going to total this up, because as soon as you draw that line, an hour later, the numbers have changed. And so that's why we've, we put on the website every Monday at five o'clock to say we're going to update the previous week. So that basically means starting at, you know, midnight on Monday morning, and it goes all the way through Sunday night at midnight, and then we're going to put those up on Monday. So sometimes even out in the public, people are saying, wait a minute, I got a call today. So today, we may have had a positive at a school, that school is going to get a call today to say that there was a positive at that school, but it's not going to be on the website until next Monday because you've got to draw a, some kind of a point to tally those up. And then people say, oh, wait a minute, they're, they're lying, or that's not it, there's a conspiracy. No, it's just a, we're going to go Monday at midnight till Sunday at midnight and then put those totals up because every day, all day, those are changing with fluid numbers. So if the board says, well, we want a cumulative total, and we want to know who's been recovered, well, that's a whole different set of information that nobody's really asked for on a consistent basis to say, well, you, you want that every day? Very difficult to give it to you every day, but weekly information is easy to look at and then compare, so you have an idea of, wow, this week was significantly different than last week because you may have a day that's, wow, today we had a whole lot of cases, tomorrow we have low cases, but when you take seven days together, it's pretty easy to say, okay, here's an info, piece of information that we can look at to see, this is significantly worse, it's not just a bad day or a good day. So the one piece of consistent information since we started was to say, hey, can you bring back Thursday to Thursday, which is what we do, so we send that to the board every Friday to say, here's the data Thursday to Thursday, and at the time, what you asked for was positivity, cases and hospitalizations, we send that to you every Friday with what the trends are. And then at the board meeting, usually at this work session, we go over that data to say, what has that looked like up until this point? And that's what Mr. Schultz will go over now, if that's what you guys want him to do.
All right, thank you, good evening once again. So in this, in this PowerPoint, for those of you that haven't seen this data, this is consistent every week, and we like to look at the, the state, the state of the state first, and then the, the state of Cabarrus County. And, and so what we've seen over time is, you know, I'll just point out here, when, in July, when we made a decision to go to Plan C, we all thought it was like the, you know, COVID was as bad as it was going to get. And I'll just say, you know, you'll see it in the data, we doubled down on that data. It's, it's actually double and sometimes more than, more than double that. Of course, on this, on this slide, you expect to see cases to go up over time, and that's exactly what's happening, obviously. But I do want to point out on this one, so if you look at 10-3, so it's two, was two months ago Thursday, we're at 216,000. So from the third of October to the third of November, we went up about, what is it, 64,000 cases? But then the very next month, the point of comparison, 11-3 to 12-3, we're 97,000 cases. So you can see how it's accelerated across the, across the state from 64,000 cases to almost 100,000, and 97,000 cases. So you see there's obviously a big jump in the last month across the state, and that's really, you know, this is really just to show you the pace of, of how things accelerate. Okay, Larry? And then the next slide is the daily cases. So we can see, again, if you look back in July, kind of that little hump in the middle, we can see what's happened since then. The, the yellow line is the average cases over the, over the previous seven days, that yellow line kind of just follows the average over a seven-day period. But you see, on Thursday, we were at 5,637 new cases just on Thursday, which back in July, I think the highest was about 2,100. So you can see when I say doubling, it's probably, you know, two and a half times what it was on that day. And of course, that was the highest day on record, and then, but the cases, you know, you go back to that little cluster before that, it was, you know, near the 4,000 mark. Again, so those are daily, daily cases across the state. Next slide, please. And then percent positivity, you can see that's kind of slowly risen across the state over time. Now, when we look at typically, our Health Alliance gives us the, the weekly average, the state reports it out as a daily, as a daily, so you can look at, you know, we just pick out points in, points in time on the state website. So you can see on 12-1, it was at 10.1%. You can see there's the day before that was in the 11s, there's a group of 10s there and some 9s pretty consistently over the last, it's really two weeks across the state in North Carolina. All right, and these are the hospitalizations. Really, I just kind of picked the, the, there's a graph that shows it monthly, but then there's also a graph that shows it over time. The, the hospitalizations over time since March looks very similar to the one that we looked at on the report of daily cases, you know, it's kind of almost not tripled, but is, again, about two and a half times. But if you just look at the last month, it's almost doubled over the last month, the number of hospitalizations. And I, you know, as a, I guess as a citizen, I'll say the thing that I worry about the most is the hospital part of it, you know, can our hospitals handle the capacity? And then on top of that, the emergencies that happen, and, you know, we all know there's a nurse, you know, a nursing shortage and things like that. So, you know, personally, I'm, I'm very concerned about hospitalizations at this point. All right, next slide? And then, then we, you know, move into the, the local level, so we look at, and I do have the slides that go back to July when we started that, and I, you know, share that with anybody if you want those, but so we've got these every week since, since July. But this shows the last kind of two and a half months. And really, what I'd point out probably is the acceleration over the last three weeks in the county in terms of new cases and active cases. So when we look at the new cases from like 11-12 to the week of 11-19, we saw that was around 350, and then all of a sudden, the week from 11-19 to 11-26, we jumped up in about 550. And then the, the following week, which was last week, we jumped up in the, the 600, you know, 640, and now 675 cases, right around in there. So you can see the acceleration over time. These are, these, you know, obviously, these are local folks in the county that are being impacted by that. And, you know, I would say, most of that impact is, do we, do we have a lot of people getting really sick from it? No, but do we have some? Yes. And then the, the impact is really the quarantine, you know, when you quarantine for 14 days, that really greatly impacts everyone's lives by that. So I just think about that, the 600 and whatever people that we have right now, and multiply that by the number of days that it quarantined somebody, that impacts a lot of functions, not just in our district, but across our county as a whole. And then the next, the next slide is the percent positivity, and this last percent positivity, and Dr. Louder said it earlier, the Health Alliance very early on said, well, when we said, well, what do we monitor? You know, because to your point, Ms. Grimsley, there is so much data out there, and then people get really fancy with it, and the fancier they get, the more confusing it gets, that, that they told us, it's the hospitalizations, it's the number of new cases, and it's a percent positivity. And so that's really what this whole slide was, this whole deck was based off of, is what their recommendation was very early on. So lastly, we got the percent positivity. This week was a, this past week was 11, 11.1. That's the highest point since back in, I think that was April, where you see the 17.5, when we were testing about 400 people back then, and then that was a, that was... a, that was a living center, a senior living center. So that's what spiked it that week. And then the rest of the time, you can see, the percent positivity has kind of varied, and then we're at the highest point besides that 17. But I'm going to get up and just actually show you something here. So there's always this kind of confusion thing about, well, you test more, so you're going to have a higher positivity. Well, it's not necessarily the case. It doesn't quite work that way, and this is actually a good week to show that. 5,800 tested here, and 4,500 folks tested here, but then we went from 9.5 to 11.1. And so is this really how many people, when they walk in, how many people, even just out of 10 or out of 100, how many people end up testing positive? So 11.1 this week certainly moved us into a different kind of indicator category in terms of what the state recognizes for the red category that they have. And then the last slide is the hospitalizations locally at Northeast Atrium. At this date, we had 66 patients, and the COVID unit, the very next day was 70. Those are the two highest numbers on record. I think we had 63, maybe, was it back in July? And that was, that was the third highest that I remember. So definitely, we were seeing some pressure at the local level with the hospitals. So with that, those are kind of the stats from this past week.
What is that, 24 right there? Is that, it says Cabarrus 24?
Yeah, there's a Cabarrus residents. Yep. And then the 66 would be the total. So people that live, I always give the example of when, you know, my daughters were born, we live close to the Mecklenburg Line. Well, I went to, I went to the University Hospital, and that's where my daughters were born. So a lot of people that live on the Stanley County, Cabarrus Line, the Mecklenburg, Cabarrus County Line, they may end up going to Northeast for their COVID hospitalization.
And let me just summarize a couple of things Mr. Schultz said, then, and we'll certainly then try to answer questions. So first of all, just say how much we appreciate Mr. Schultz, kind of puts his data together each week and puts it in formats, which is easy to read and easy to follow in graphs. So thank you, Mr. Schultz, for doing that. So just to give you some context of where we are today compared to where we were in the summer. So this summer, when we decided to stay in C and open up school, we roughly had about 300 cases a week. So we went from 100 cases a week to 200 to 300 when we were making that decision. We were about 10% positivity rate, and the hospitalizations, as Mr. Schultz said, was in the 60s, low 60s. So those were the three indicators that at least the former board said, hey, we should look at. So all of those data indicators today are significantly worse than they were when we made the decision to stay in C. So we have, today, there were 69 people in the hospital, so one under the highest we've seen, which is 70. So hospitalizations are essentially at the highest since this began. Cases, when, again, this summer, when we were concerned with 300 a week, we now had 683 cases in the past week here. So more than doubled that situation as far as moving forward. And then the positivity rate is now, again, it was 10 then, which was pretty much the highest. Now it's at 11%. And again, just want to emphasize what Mr. Schultz said. We have had, even in this discussion brought up, people say, well, the reason you have a higher positivity rate is because you're testing more people. And so this past week, we tested about 1,300 less people, but the positivity rate went up about a percent and a half. So those two things are not necessarily correlated. And so those are areas, all three of those areas, that I think the community is concerned about. Certainly, the Health Alliance tell you that we should be concerned about as a community and as a school system. And those are the conversations that we, you know, have with them about, you know, how to move forward. So again, I appreciate Mr. Schultz presenting the information and trying to give you a little bit of a context of the difference in July when we made that decision, and where we're at now. Significantly worse data in everything that we've been tracking for that amount of time.
So I'm going to give the board members an opportunity to ask questions and ask for information, and I'm going to start with Ms. Blackwell this time.
Okay. So thank you. I actually wanted to ask you a little bit about the quarantine process. So right now, Cabarrus County schools, from my understanding, we're doing a 14-day quarantine. Some of the more recent guidelines that have come out have suggested that the new guidelines would be like a 10-day or 7-day quarantine with a negative test. Is that something that we're looking at if we're quarantining, you know, teachers or students who may have possibly been exposed, but then are now not having any symptoms, and then have come back with a negative test, coming back sooner rather than making them stay out 14 days?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we've been in conversations with the Cabarrus Health Alliance about that. That's a recent change, and we'll follow their lead on that. The 14 days is based on what they are recommending right now. However, I do anticipate we'll see a change with that. If not prior to winter break, we'll certainly see it in January.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Sandra?
So I'm, of course, rather new to all of this. Those numbers are really concerning to me. I've seen this board discuss the lower numbers, as Dr. Louder talked about before. I'm wondering, and this may not be the place for me to ask this question, I'm wondering, you know, I hear a lot of parents want to keep their kids in school. They like Plan B. They want us to go to Plan A at this point. But I'm wondering, what's the likelihood of us, you know, going all virtual right now, because these numbers are so high, and we are already in, you know, the vacation mode, we're in the holidays, so kids will be out anyway? Again, I don't know if this is the place for that, but it gives us a time for us to create that task force you were referring to, to really come up with some really good ideas as to how we safely get our kids back in school. I am totally for our kids learning better. My kid is not doing well in all virtual. Right now, I had a meeting with all of her teachers today as a result of that. So I definitely know that my daughter is one who needs to be in school, but this is ultimately unsafe for our entire community where we're at right now. And again, I just wanted to see if that was possible.
Mr. Walter?
So are we facing increases, but all the other counties around Charlotte are also facing increases? In fact, most of them are even worse than we are. Are we communicating with those school districts on what their plans are, or any changes that they've made?
Yes. I think I've told you guys before, we communicate, have a weekly meeting with all of our neighboring districts, and we have a large district call, which, with the 12 largest districts in the state, that, so I have that call tomorrow morning. So we do that each week. I would say that some of that data that you're referring to, I know you sent some information earlier from the state, but those are daily rates. So again, back to that whole point, if you don't want to have a really good day or a bad day, the reason our Health Alliance reports that weekly is so we're not just saying, oh, yesterday was a terrible day, or yesterday was a good day. We take that by the week and say, what was the weekly positivity rate, which is where the 11% is. But certainly, the Charlotte region is one of the higher regions in the state. So if you look at the Wake County area, Chapel Hill, Wake, Durham, they're less than half of what our positivity rate is now. So our area, the Charlotte area and the surrounding counties, which our consortium is 12 or 13 districts, something like that, just about all of them would be in the areas that are concerned. So it is the number one thing, it's the reason that we meet once a week. We talk about it all the time. What are you doing? Who did you have to quarantine? Did you have to quarantine? Did you have to close a school? Did you have to quarantine an athletic team? Those are all things that we're sharing with each other to figure out the best way to handle.
Yeah. And Mr. Walter, I just say, I'm once a week with a large, the 12 largest districts in the state as well. It's a different group of folks. And we actually meet with two medical professionals from Duke, and so they, who are targeting school-based COVID incidents and rates and transmissions and all that. So I'm daily, or weekly, getting updated on the research, on the current research that's out there in terms of spread and transmissions. And then we actually talked about, to Ms. Blackwell's question, we talked about the new CDC guidelines last Thursday about that. So that's a group that's, you know, I'm always kind of geeked out by the research, and so I really like that. But it also has, you know, Guilford Counties on there, and Cumberland Counties on there. And so it's the representatives, the kind of the folks that do what I do on a daily basis, and we're sharing practices and finding out what a lot of those districts do as well.
I'm glad, glad to hear that we're communicating and coordinating. So are we officially in the red category?
Well, I don't know that this is, I don't know that it's come out. I think it comes out this week. I think it's updated this week. But by all the indicators on that, all the categories that the state put out for indicators to be red, we would fall within those, we'd fall within the red county.
Okay. The last question would be, the state has not given us direction that they think we ought to close.
No, we have not, no. We have not reset any direction. It's all locally based still.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I can say the information that we've got from the state is, I don't expect there to be a statewide decision for schools, because again, we have, in the Durham area, for example, they have a 3% positivity rate, a 2% positivity rate.
We were in that same boat in the spring, and they still closed it.
Yes. Yeah, but I think now that we've done that, that what we're hearing now, the governor may change that tomorrow. Somebody texted me before we started and said the governor's going to speak tomorrow. I don't know. But that may change tomorrow. But what we have heard in meetings with the governor's office, with his education liaison, when he talks to, he's actually been on with the larger districts before, is they're probably not going to make a statewide decision, because an 11% positivity rate is five times worse than a 2% positivity rates, right? So I expect that to still be a local decision. Now, again, he could change that tomorrow, but all the indications we're getting is it will probably be a county-by-county, system-by-system decision.
Mr. Farr?
Yeah, I guess I'm really shocked that King Cooper hadn't shut us down yet, but I'm sure that's coming. But one question on the hospital there again. Is Cabarrus still the hospital where, like Union County, Stanley County are bringing the COVID patients to, like it was earlier, like in the summer?
No, I'm not aware of that, but my understanding was that they tried to balance out the COVID units at all of the area hospitals to ensure that no one hospital is overloaded. And that may have changed. I don't know, Dr. Louder, have you heard any different on that?
Yeah, the hospital is part of that community call that Ms. Grimsley will be invited to next week, and so there's hospital representatives on that call. And so, like Mr. Schultz said, what we've been explained is that what they're trying to do is move people from facility to facility, so everybody has got capacity in case they have somebody that comes in. So sometimes we have more, sometimes we have less. It may be an unscientific answer. Somebody from the hospital may can do it better, but in a general sense, is they're trying to equalize that out among their facilities to make sure they can accept patients regardless of, you know, how many come in, because sometimes they, I think they had 10 new patients today, I was told, of that 70. So that's a pretty large percentage that they have to have enough beds to be able to handle.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question? So at our hospital in Cabarrus County, a few weeks ago, we were told that they were no longer accepting patients that were not in Cabarrus County, that it was only Cabarrus County patients that were on the COVID floor. And so now, are they being brought in from other counties as well?
Yeah, I wouldn't want to answer that, because again, I'm afraid I'd be wrong. I just know that they changed that. It depends on numbers, status, other areas. So they're kind of moving in and out of that depending on how they're working. So again, layman's terms, that it'd be better for the hospital answer, but, you know, if they have three wings, or kind of three halls that are COVID halls, I know they've expanded that by one or two over the past week to be able to say, now we have to handle this many. So, but I know that's constantly in flux. They're working with, you know, CMC Maine and other areas to be able to move that around. So I would just say, we'll try to get a hospital rep to send you a specific answer, because I don't want to say something that's wrong, but that's kind of the general way it's been explained to us.
I have a follow-up question, too. Mr. Schultz, is that group that you're working with at Duke, is that the ABC Science Collaborative?
That's correct.
Okay.
Cool.
Ms. Adcock?
Wait a minute, I want to finish.
I'm sorry, you go right ahead.
That's okay. I know historically, when we look at different data for curriculum or different things, we look at surrounding counties that are kind of similar to size. Correct. Well, I know we have.
Yes.
So I was just thinking, well, I have, you know, I have two grandkids that go to Union County schools, and they're very close to our size, I'm guessing still. And by the numbers I saw earlier, they're pretty, you know, we're all, we're both in 11-point, whatever range, but we don't know if that's weekly. But anyway, they're going four days a week. And that, you know, my common sense thoughts are like, you know, if they can, if they can do it, why can't we do it? Why, or what are they doing different? I don't think they're smarter than we are, but then again, they may be. But, you know, I've talked to principals in Union County. I took it upon myself to do that, and, so I kind of know what they're doing. But is, should I be comparing ourselves to Union County, or should I not?
Yeah, my answer to that would be that we're, you're looking at, you know, all kinds of information, local, Union County is, they have a bigger school system than we do, but they're certainly one that we compare to. So it just depends on what your metrics are. So again, I would say this board needs to decide, what is it that we want to look at? So for example, I can tell you, I speak to the Union County Superintendent once a week on those calls. I've actually spoken to him three times in the past five business days. And they have closed many, many, many more schools than we have, right? So in Union County, they've had to say, this school is closed for the next 14 days. This school is closed for the next 14 days. We haven't had to do that yet. We may have to do that tomorrow, depending on what kind of an outbreak we have. But I would say, you know, so what elements do you want to replicate? I hope that we don't have to close schools, so I don't want to replicate that part of it. But there are certainly things that Union County has done very well, and again, we're in constant communication with them. So are there, are they in school four days a week for elementary school? Yes. Are there some things about that that are, that are more problematic than being in B? Yes. So it just depends on what your, what your goal is.
Ms. Adcock?
I think I would like to know that number 24, because that's Cabarrus County residents, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So you're talking about 42 people that are in the hospital, not from this county. And I did hear that they were bringing patients from out of state in here, from other hospitals. And that was, this week I heard that, from somebody that works at the hospital. So I would like to find out why or what that number really represents, because that's huge. If that's only 24 patients in the hospital from our county, then that number should be changed, and should not show 66, because that would not represent our county.
Yeah, before they did their, we did the website, they did actually show that on another chart, the residents that were hospitalized. And I may, it may still be on there, but I don't see it anymore. So until about three weeks ago, that number was on there. So, which is why, and I think, it was actually Ms. Grimsley, you requested that be on there, which is why that, we put that on the chart. So I do, we, the Health Alliance still reports that out to us, the number of residents, and we've done that consistently probably for the last two months. In terms of how the hospital operates, we can get that answer. I don't, I don't know that answer.
Yeah, I think Mr. Schultz's example is the one we've used here before. So if, you know, Mr. Schultz lives in Cabarrus County, he, his wife and he had a baby at University Hospital. It's, if it's five miles this way or five miles that way. So technically, if that showed up, if he went to University Hospital to be treated for COVID, then they would say, well, he's not a Cabarrus, he's not a Mecklenburg County resident. So I think the hospital would say to you, it doesn't really matter where they live. These are all people who, if they drive from Stanley County and it's just as close, or if they're from Rowan County and it's just as close, it is their capacity. I haven't heard anything about out of state. Again, we'll try to, you know, try to clarify that. But I think if you were here visiting your family over Thanksgiving and you had COVID, I assume you go to the hospital and have to be treated. So I think an out-of-state person may be there. I'm certainly not aware of some kind of mass shipment of that. But we'll try to get this week to just say, can you clarify that and send that, because the board has asked numerous questions about who lives here. I think for our area, we're lucky to have a facility that is kind of state-of-the-art compared to a lot of places around us. Obviously, have access to Charlotte, so a CMC Maine is this big one, and we're very large compared to that. So some of the smaller areas around us come to Cabarrus County to be treated instead of a smaller facility in their county. And so because of that, we're an option for people that may not be for others. So we haven't spent tons of time on that on the call, but again, there are hospital representatives and may just have them try to specifically answer that, because I know that's something that you guys have asked repeatedly.
Ms. Carpenter?
And one question I have. That may be the case, but still, that number's high, and their staff is going to have to serve those people. And so that's going to put a strain on the staff, and that's what we're worried about. And that's where the concern is. There's 66 people there, and yeah, maybe only 40, 24 maybe hours, but their staff are going to have to serve all of them. That's not going to change. So we're going to have to deal with it. I mean, basically, and that's not going to change. What are you going to do? Tell those people, I'm sorry, you're going to have to go back to wherever you come from. I don't think that's going to happen. But anyway, I mean, it's still going to overwork the staff. Now, my first to overwork the staff. Now, my first question is basically, and y'all have not mentioned it, is it not true that we've had at least three of our volleyball teams that's had to be quarantined, but there's been a total of four? Didn't Kannapolis have one? Or update me on this.
Yes, ma'am. And Mr. Schultz and Mr. Tyson work the closest, so he can certainly clarify. But three of our,
In total?
Three of our varsity volleyball teams have been quarantined because of close contact, which means they can't play for X amount of days, 14 days. And then Kannapolis City Schools, which is in our conference, has had the same thing. So I'm aware of three of ours, one from Kannapolis, so four in our county. Anything that, to clarify that, Mr. Schultz?
No, this is correct. So Thursday, we had to quarantine a school, no, I'll take that back. Yeah, Thursday we did, Friday afternoon at 4:30, I got a call on, on the, another school. And then about a week and a half ago, we had to quarantine another volleyball team. So three, three volleyball teams total in Cabarrus County schools. AL Brown High School did have to quarantine as well. So they were the fourth in the county. The Northwest Cabarrus High School and AL Brown are out of their quarantine period as of right now. So we have two currently that are in quarantine.
With that, the other thing that I would like to, to mention is that, you know, we've got those problems, as you mentioned, we're the highest we, before we, we went to see before. I am very concerned with this. I really feel like that we do need to go to see, because if we don't do it now and we wait till our business meeting, we're really not giving parents a chance to work on getting daycare or anything like that. Now, would I need to amend the agenda if I was going to put a motion on the floor at this point?
Well, how about we finish the discussion first and then we can tackle that, okay? Because I haven't spoke and I think Laura had another question.
Okay, okay.
Is that all the questions you had or any information?
Well, basically, well, I asked about that. I think that may be the only, yeah, go ahead with that. And then I would...
Okay. Ms. Blackwell, did you have another question?
Well, I just wondered if... I had a statement that I wanted to make that I had prepared for tonight, and I didn't know when would be the correct place to put that. So you, you let me know.
Do you think it's appropriate right now as far as the discussion? Or do you want me to finish mine and then, and I'll let you make one more statement because we need to, we do need to move on and figure out if that's what you want to do tonight, statement? Or you let me finish my question?
You finish yours. Yeah, that's totally fine.
So Brian, one of the questions I had that I've asked a couple of different times in emails is how, where is the Cabarrus County schools' information? So when we put this out to the general public, and this is what I get more questions about than anything, that's why I put the emails out there, is where is our, and I hear you say it's on the website, it's at school site by site, and that's great. That's what those individual parents are looking at or staff members. But when we do this presentation, to me, it's very important to see, we're only responsible for Cabarrus County schools. We're not responsible for Kannapolis City, homeschoolers, private schoolers, you know, charter schoolers. To me, it's more important for us to say, okay, this is the overall picture and I appreciate that and I told you that in the email. This is great. And it's important that we see what the state's doing. But what our role is, is to address Cabarrus County schools. So that's why I've asked for some type of format, which I think my whole goal for this task force is to break all that down and to drill down into what does Cabarrus County schools look like. You know, that, that's what was a little frustrating to me at the last meeting that I got that information on Friday and all of a sudden that number was 350. And if you weren't paying close attention, you didn't know that that was a very cumulative number for that, for everybody in Cabarrus County. But then when we drilled down, that 350, 60 became 97, that after it was a cumulative number from October the 19th became less than half that. I think that's, I know it's not done purposely and, and I don't intend to, you know, say that. But what I'm saying is it's not helpful not to know what we're, we are dealing with really in our school system. Does it tie trade over to us and that's the message we got from the Health Alliance? Sure. Will it? Absolutely. But at this point in time, we have a huge decision to make and we need to know when we make that decision, parents really get to see the true picture of Cabarrus County schools. So that's my first question. My second...
Can I answer that first?
Sure, go ahead, go ahead.
Because I might forget by the time you get here next time.
Sure.
So I would just say, you know, our, I'll just say my hesitancy on putting, just putting tons of data out there about Cabarrus County schools specifically is just privacy of information. And certainly we can, we can...
But can I interrupt you for just a moment?
Sure.
It's not like we're releasing individuals' names or some type of HIPAA violation in the medical field. And I get that, you know, I deem from that world. But my thought is, it is important that we're very honest with what's going on in our school system. So we're not putting the fear that they see this 11.1. So number one, I would ask that 11.1, when we do know that we are a hub with Atrium Health, we are receiving patients from other counties. Is that 11.1 if we pulled Cabarrus County out of that residence only? Because those people go back to their prospective counties and that's where they recover, that's where they're treated, that's where they're reported. But does that 11.1, is it accurate to just us? Or is that a cumulative number that it involves other people that are from the surrounding counties? And I think that's an important piece of information. Nobody else may think that's important, but it's important to me.
Yeah, I think, and we can clarify, I think we have before, that that number I believe is Cabarrus County residents only, but we'll clarify that. So yeah, and so as, you know, about to say, so it's a, it's a, this balance of privacy of information because we do have some small schools. I mean, you know that, Arvram McAllister or Alloks Elementary. So if you drill down too far in a grade level or in a classroom, then that, that makes me, gets me a little nervous. But definitely, we can present it in a way that doesn't do that. And if we just say we can't do that because that could be identifiable information, we'll just say that. The, the other thing I think that, you know, we balance out, we have to balance on this too, is that we have folks that are working their tails off night and day to prevent COVID from coming into the school. And, and so it's this balance of trying to produce the data that's meaningful, and that's what we want to give you because you have to make an informed decision. If I pull people off to prevent kids from coming in school or staff that coming into school to give you the data that you need, then it's, it's one or the other, you know? And I guess maybe there's a sweet spot on that. But this stuff is not easy to, you know, if it's not, if it's not publicly, publicly accessible, that means somebody on the team, myself, Mr. Basil Lees, one of the administrative assistants, is, is doing that data. And it pulls them off of some other important tasks. Now, I can't think of a more important task than keeping people safe. So we just, so that's, that's the balance that we wrestle with in all honesty. It's tough to, and it's not about, you know, hiding or protecting. It's, it's about making sure our number one priority right now, if I get a call on Sunday night of a suspected student case that may have had multiple contacts in their community or at the school two days before, my number one priority is to make sure to mitigate that situation for Monday morning. And so sometimes I, I, you know, as much as I like the crunch data, that, that then becomes my priority. So it's a balancing act, Ms. Grimsley, and that's, you know, I think we've got some data. I know you asked some questions about that. So we have some data that we can share that I think is a little more, you know, I guess forthcoming or a little more eliminates what we've dealt with. And we certainly share that. But that's always the balancing act is, I think, is, you know, a supervisor of people that I know are doing that. And then, you know, myself, you know, just taking it upon myself, doing some of that data as well, a lot of the data as well. So.
And Brian, I want you to hear me loud and clear. I'm not giving you a hard time. I know that it's got to be very cumbersome and, and you know, I've told you in an email, I appreciate the information. But I feel like that stuff that we already, we can pull up ourselves, you know, and go back and backtrack to the mental health or to the health department's information or the state's. And not to negate what y'all are doing, because I know that's what you have to do to be, always look at how it's going to impact our community. And I get that, I really do. But at the end of the day, I still say, as much as that's, that is important, I really want to know what's going on in our school system. Because I've yet to see a report that says how it affects our, if, if we're having a lot of teachers or staff in quarantine, what does that look like right now for us? You know, where does this board make a decision based on we've got teacher issues? We haven't gotten that information. Or are we truly having problems with getting subs into the classroom so that we can take care of some of those? You know, that's the information that's really not come to us. But I think that is coming to be backed into, how much are we really affected by all of this? You know, we know we are, but if we're going to quantify and talk metrics and numbers and data, we got to speak it out both sides of our mouth. And you know, I know that y'all do a great job. Those graphs are great, you know, when it comes, they're very in-depth. But it does not pull out Cabarrus County schools except that day to day. And it's real hard to keep up with, you know, when you're, when you're thinking, I'm getting two today and three tomorrow and four, you know, it's just, it's really, and I know that you're doing the best that you can, which is really kind of backing into what I was saying. I, you know, when Dr. Lauter made the comment and was probably very true to the point, that it's the manpower and y'all have a hard time keeping up with that and all the different, you know, requested information. I know when we first started this, Cabarrus Health Alliance said that if we had a hard time doing this reporting system, that they would offer help. Then again, I said, well, they've probably got inundated with the whole process and how long it's taken and how deep it's gotten into. And I get that. That's my whole reason for saying, I think it's time we have our own task force, you know, that really just focuses and concentrates on Cabarrus County schools. But with that, I also, you know, I would like to know what the surrounding counties' hospital numbers look like. I haven't seen that. You know, we, we heard initially and the new board members may, you know, this is new information for them. But we heard that Stanley and Rowan and University Hospital and Statesville-Irdeale or several of those weren't taking COVID patients. You were automatically sent to Atrium in Concord. So, you know, I would like to know what right now are the, and that may be a lot of information. Maybe the Health Alliance can help with that. But I would like to know, okay, if ours look like that and that's Cabarrus County, what does the surrounding counties look like? You know, what are their hospitalizations? What are their active cases being treated?
Yeah, there is a, on the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services website, it breaks the hospitalizations out by region.
Right.
And I can't remember, there's eight or nine counties in our region, and it's probably who you would suspect would be in our region on that. It's actually pink colored. So when you go to the hospitalizations on the COVID site for the Health and Human Services, that information is there. Now, how far it drills down, I can't quite remember. But it's something we can pull up and share with you and see, see what you think about that. And I think that, you know, to that point, I mean, that's what we want to hear, like what you want to see. Because if, if you, if what I just presented makes sense to y'all every week and that's what you want, that's what you'll get. And then if, but if it's the regional hospitalizations, I mean, that's an easy, you know, I think it's nice to have in one place so you don't have to click on 16 different websites like I'm doing.
Yes.
To get that information. So, but I actually, it's weird, but I actually like doing that stuff. So, but there is a...
Well, we're going to push you to work.
There's so much data on the Health and Human Services website. And that's, that's really the source. The News and Observer out of Raleigh does one too, and I pull some graphs from there as well. But they're still pulling all their data on all their graphs from the Health and Human Services website.
And I just want, one thing I want to make clear is so, you know, one thing I think that hasn't happened is again, the board needs to say if, you know, with enough time to pull it, if you want to know quarantines, then tell us you want to know quarantines weekly and we will show you how many people we have quarantined. That is, again, an ever-changing number. It's probably changed since we got out of school today. I pretty much guarantee it. But if you say, every Monday, I want you to tell me how many people are, how many students are quarantined and how many staff, then we'll give it to you. We haven't been consistently asked that. I think we were asked that for the first time in a meeting. So the manpower part of that is just tell us what information you want and we'll have it for you. And again, especially a weekly basis, I think probably tells you the most so you don't have a good day or a bad day. But the board says, here's what we want and here's how we want it, then we'll get it to you.
Okay. So I think I'll take that and do my takeaway that says that for the next board, the next business meeting, each board member give me a couple of important facts that you want so that we can put that together, so that they know exactly what we're looking for. You know, it is, I'm sure, very hard to get an email from me and one from the others and maybe we're not on the same page. But maybe we just all need to come with, or email them to me during the week so that we can come up with, I'm sure we're somewhat consistent, you know, what we think is important that we would like to see. So just email that to me, then maybe we can take that up at the business meeting. Is that good for everybody? Yes, can I get some shakes of heads? Okay, good. All right. And with that, I guess we're going to keep you for the next policy revision. So, okay, that's fine, that's fine.
We take a little stretch break at some point?
I'm sorry?
A stretch break a little bit?
You would like to take a stretch break?
Spend three hours?
Yeah, absolutely. So at this point in time, we'll take a five-minute recess. Will that work? Thank you. Good evening and welcome back to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Monday Night Business Meeting for December the 7th. We were in a five-minute recess, we are now returning, and the discussion as we left was regarding COVID comments and some information that the board is going to get together and request from the superintendent and his staff, so that we can all be on the same page of what we're looking at. I know that we have Ms. Wagner on the line. Ms. Wagner, are you there?
I am here.
Ms. Wagner, at this point in time, you've heard the discussion. Would you like to make a statement or any type of comment?
Yes, I would. Is there a little bit of place, Karen?
I'm sorry, what was your question? You had some feedback.
Can you guys hear me, or is there a back feedback?
No, we can hear you now.
Okay, great. Well, let me begin by saying thank you for your willingness to serve as elected member for Cabarrus County School Board Education. Many of you, including myself, did not sign up to lead an entire district during a global pandemic, but three of you have ran for the school board in spite of the global pandemic, and for that, I applaud you. I know that you all take very seriously the task of doing what is best for the students and staff of our district. For those who may not know me and are listening, my name is Emily Wagner, and I represent Cabarrus County Schools as the 2020-2021 Teacher of the Year, and because of that, I have found myself as a non-voting member on the Board of Education as the teacher liaison. I know the difficulty of the decisions that you have faced since March of 2020, because I have been with you since July. I am a third-grade elementary school teacher, and I have firsthand experience with the upheaval and challenges that this pandemic has caused and will continue to cause for our county and nation. I have seen the impact that having students in Plan C and B has had on the children and families that have been entrusted in my care, in addition to the children of close friends and colleagues, the students at R. Brown McAllister Elementary, and the teachers and staff at RBM. I can testify and think that we can all agree that there is not one perfect plan that will solve the issues that this pandemic has created and the existing issues that this pandemic have continued to intensify. While some of my students have thrived in learning remotely, I am painfully aware of situations where students from pre-K to 12th grade would be best served by face-to-face full-time instruction. However, we, and you really, as a board, must consider, and what plan can we most safely serve those students while still maintaining high expectations for all? As a teacher, I am often privy to seeing what the numbers we discuss might not make clear, so I would like to share from my personal experience and my perspective in my classroom. I teach at R. Brown McAllister Elementary School. My school is not Title I, but we do serve a large population of students that are at or below the poverty level. We are a very small elementary school that has close to 350 students enrolled. In Plan B, we are currently able to practice social distancing in the classroom at all grade levels. This means that the teachers are able to sit and stand, as well as students, within a six-foot square and not be considered a close contact should a student or an adult in the classroom test positive for COVID-19. I do have a large classroom and a small class size of 15, which makes Plan B and the safety protocols that come along with it more manageable as the 15 students in my class are split either completely remote, attending school on Monday and Wednesday, or Tuesday and Thursday. So this is a benefit of working at a small neighborhood school. Across my building, my teammates who have similar class sizes but are in a mobile unit are also able to practice social distancing in Plan B. If more students were to return to the building, they would not be able, or they would be unable to ensure the six feet of difference safety protocol due to their mobile classroom size. I will not speak for other schools across the district, because I'm not privy to that information, but I imagine that there are other classrooms across the district that may be managing well at the moment, may have different struggles, as the majority of our schools in this district's ADM numbers are double or triple our student population. As stated in previous meetings, we don't have the exact numbers of teachers and staff members who are currently absent due to COVID. That information is not released to the public. I am only responsible for the information that is accessible to me as a teacher in my classroom at R. Brown McAllister. But what I can share with you is that when teachers are absent, if a student, if a substitute cannot be found, coverage still has to be provided. So I want to share for you at the elementary level what that looks like for me and teachers across the district. If a teacher, for whatever reason, is asked to quarantine, say, for two weeks, maybe it's for 10 days, either because she has COVID, has tested, he or she has tested COVID positive, or has been considered a close contact, then their class has to be covered all day by somebody else. Teachers and staff members are also periodically, have to be absent for reasons that are not related to COVID, so I do want to point that out. Oftentimes, this coverage comes in forms of a teacher assistant or another support staff member. This presents multiple problems in that the TA or support staff who is covering for the absent teacher is no longer able to do his or her other daily responsibilities that are not limited to point, small groups, or mass groups. The lack of available staff greatly reduces the positive impact to face-to-face instruction. Another problem is that no matter how wonderful or how proficient the person is who is covering, it is not the same as that homeroom certified teacher leading that class for however long coverage is needed. If asked, will principals make sure that an adult is in the room with students, so that they will never go without safety and supervision? The answer is always going to be yes. Will that be the best possible instruction available and presented by a certified classroom teacher? Currently, in my experience, that answer cannot always be yes. I am a teacher who is passionate about providing the highest quality of learning available to our students. I would say that that is one of the reasons why I was elected as Teacher of the Year, is because of the quality of instruction that I strive to provide for my students, because our students and families of Cabarrus County deserve it. But I'm also a wife, a daughter, a sister, a friend, and a concerned citizen. I also want to get back to how school was on March 13th, 2020, when students were able to play freely on the playground, participate in group work, and do hands-on experiments. I do not want my students to have to sit in the yellow taped-off six-foot squares that I've put in my classroom. I want us to be able to share together, to hug, and to learn. I want kids to be able to kids, to be kids, but I want this to happen safely. You guys must work together to get back to this vision. We must work together to get back to what we know what is best for students, and this means taking precautions now that will ensure our return to school as we remember it. I wanted to take a moment to share this statement as you are a new board, and as a new board, you have the responsibility and authority to do what's best for the longevity of our county. And I ask that you please consider the recommendations of our superintendent, our district leaders, and the Cabarrus Health Alliance prior to voting on your decision, and I thank you so much for allowing me to have this role and having the opportunity to speak on these meetings and represent our teachers in our district. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. We appreciate your input. I also would like to take an opportunity to ask our student intern, Ms. Finley Edwards, if she would like to come down and make a statement as well.
Good evening, new board members. I'm Finley Edwards. I'm a senior at Cox Mill High School and also the board intern for the Cabarrus County School Board, and I'm just going to basically go over my notes that I've taken from today and my thoughts on everything. My first thing that I think needs to be pointed out is that the spread for Cabarrus County schools is not necessarily, from what I know, originating in schools, but from the community spread. So why are we not focusing on the numbers that are specifically for school when that's affecting, not affecting, sorry. Students should not be penalized for what the community spread numbers are, but should be allowed to stay in school, because we're not, the spread is not happening from in the classroom, as far as I'm concerned. Schools are one of the safest places for students to be at this time, and it has benefited in the growth for our education. I, for one, whenever I'm not in-person learning, there's a two-hour break between my second and third period. The other day, I went out to Target to run an errand. So all these students who are not in the classroom are able to just go out during these breaks, and they could easily catch the virus, when if they were in school, they would be in a safe building with guidelines, with masks, social distance, and the cause of the spread would not, sorry, yeah. I feel like we shouldn't be punished as students, and the ones who want to be there are following all the guidelines. I think that the task force that Holly suggested is a great idea, because it allows the community to be a part of these decisions that are ultimately affecting them. And as a senior, this really does suck for me in all other grade levels. Students are being stripped from the privileges of in-person learning, and this is extremely difficult, especially surrounding our mental health and the well-being of students. So, yes.
Thank you, Finley, thank you. Okay, so, you know, we all get messages, and I appear to have gotten one that I guess is coming from an individual that says, we have, I have, we have the information. So, Dr. Lauter, not to put you on the spot, but, and you don't have to do it tonight, but maybe for the business meeting, where do we have the information about quarantining, the effects of it, what's going on with those numbers, sub-problems? Where is, is that somewhere that I'm missing that, or the board is?
No, so I do want to say, first, we have up on the screen, because some people talked about, so on the, as prominent as it can be on the website, the main banner there that I think everybody can see, the COVID-19 report. So that's on the banner, that can be accessed at any time. As we said, that's updated every Monday at 5:00. It will tell all positives. Until recently, at one of the meetings, quarantines was never something that this board said, I want to know how many people are quarantined, because, again, quarantines are significantly higher than positives, because, again, if you have one positive on the volleyball team, for example, and then the entire team gets quarantined, so one positive means 15 people go down. Also, as I tried to explain the last time, people are quarantined, but they may live in Mecklenburg County, they're quarantined because their child's daycare had a positive, therefore their child is quarantined, so now they're quarantined. That kind of information, if they live in another county, is sometimes delayed by days or whatever. So if we have a two- or three-day delay, or two or three days later, then a lot of times, we can pull that information. So, again, if it's every Monday, I want to know how many people were quarantined this past week, then we can give that to the board.
Great.
You know, so, for example, I'll just tell you, today, there are 107 staff members who are quarantined or positive, and there are 228 students that are either positive or quarantined today. Now, that has, as I said before, changed since 3:00 this afternoon, 4:00 this afternoon, when school got out, so if I reported that to you now, those numbers would probably be higher.
Sure.
But that varies, it changes, it's fluid, and, again, sometimes, it doesn't have anything to do with the school system, it's because of a relative that's there. So if now the board says, well, I want to know everybody that's quarantined, regardless of whether it has anything to do with our school system, because it's a person removed, then we'll report that. Again, if that's a, every Monday, you want to know quarantines of staff and students, then we can do that. But until the last meeting, all of a sudden, that became something that was required, but that's certainly something that we can pull in totals. Now, like Mr. Schultz said, you don't really want to say, well, there's one in-person quarantined at R. Brown McAllister, because then suddenly, everybody knows that this teacher was out, so your board on that. But the total of students or staff is something that we can, that we can pull on a weekly basis very easily, if that's what you want us to do.
Well, I think, just me as one board member, and the others can speak to it, I think the reason it's becoming so important is because we're just now dealing with it. You know, we've only been in school since October the 19th, the cases are starting to increase that are positives, of course, the numbers of quarantines. So what does that mean? What does that picture look like? We've got a huge issue with it, we've got a mediocre?
So it's not that we just started dealing with it, we were dealing with it all summer, we were dealing with it when we were in C. Many people that are quarantined are in C. So we'll get information for students that are quarantined and can't, you know, be around other people, but they're not coming to school in B, so.
But does that really affect, so I hear you, but does that really affect, you know, I guess to me, the most important piece is for the people that are actually in, on campus, you know, and does it, my main goal there is, and maybe this is just a pure blunt question, are we having it affect teachers, as far as keeping them in the classrooms, that we are now having to really look to subs in a larger way, and that the sub shortage is a problem?
Right, and I tried to answer that last time by saying, are there schools who are significantly affected by that? Absolutely. Are there schools that we may have seven, eight, nine people that are out in quarantines? Now, those are all unrelated. So somebody is either positive or quarantined from a weekend trip, and somebody in two hallways over is quarantined because their spouse is quarantined. So those don't have anything to do with each other, so somebody may say, oh, well, there was seven positives at X school, but those seven cases are not interrelated at all. It's because on the weekend, everybody went out and did something and brought those back. And so we're working with schools every day, and as I said last time, does that become more of a challenge every day? The more community spread we have, and right now, we have very significant community spread, the more of a problem that is, because they're all people that work at schools, when we're the largest employer in Cabarrus County. So as soon as we have an issue where a principal, Mr. Schultz and Ms. Jones are working with them to say, we have 18 people that are going to be out today, or 22 people that are quarantined out, then we're going to close that school, because we can't staff it properly. To this point, we have not had to close a school, because the principal and the people working with it have been able to say, okay, we've got it covered. As somebody said earlier, it may be TAs they may have to cover during their planning period. Is that something that teachers or staff or the TAs that are covering, are they happy about that? No, but they have to do that in a regular time. Is that increased under COVID? Absolutely. We have not been to the point yet where we've said, we're going to have to close an elementary school, or a middle school, or a high school because of staff, but do I anticipate that that will happen before COVID is over? Yes. And the more community spread we have, the more likely that we're going to have so many people affected by positives or quarantines, that we just can't have school. And when we do that, much like Union County, which Mr. Farr referred to, then you say, okay, now we've got to close this elementary school, because there were so many close contacts, we can't have school.
Sure, okay. All right, thank you. And I guess it's worth noting that Governor Cooper, at some point in time, is going to be making another announcement to give us an idea of where we're going next. Maybe that may or may not affect us, but I think it's a huge piece of information as well. So with that being said, Ms. Carpenter, I will turn it over to you.
Well, I want to make a motion. Now.
You're going to have to amend the agenda.
Well, that's what I'm asking for.
Good deal.
At this point, I would like to ask to amend the agenda, I would need to get a second on that, to amend the agenda, to make a motion, to add a motion. a motion to the floor.
Add a motion to the floor to do what?
What I would like to do is to, do you want me to state my motion then?
We need to know what your reasoning for amending the agenda is.
To add a motion.
Or...
To, well, basically, what I want to do is to add a motion to the, well, I mean, do I need to state the motion?
Yeah, you've got to state what your motion is that you want to amend the agenda to add.
What I would like to do is for us to move to Plan C till January the 4th, which we would then, this board would review, you know, reassess in January the 4th, and for us to adopt the schedule, the schedule I had referred to, the green, yellow, orange, red schedule, for us to adopt that also, so that way, we have a metric to kind of go by, for us to go ahead and approve that. So, we can help, help that community spread we're talking about. But basically, to go to Plan C until January the 4th, and then, at that point, us to, our board, to review it, and then, we can decide whether we want what we want to do at that point.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to amend the agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So, we have a motion and a second to amend the agenda, to add the motion that Ms. Carpenter has presented. I'm going to ask that all of you raise your hand that are in favor of amending the agenda to add the motion. So, I have three that are in favor, and I have four, five. So, now, I would like all those opposed to raise your hand. So, the motion to amend the agenda fails for lack of support. Okay? Okay, with that being said, let's move on to, and we will keep Mr. Schultz, for items for the December 17th consent agenda under nine. And I'll just state real quickly, I'm not sure for the new board members if you're familiar with what the consent agenda is, but it's items that'll go on to the business meeting agenda that does not need additional information or any type of criteria. Mr. Shaw, do you have anything?
No, I was going to address the requirements to amend the agenda. Once the agenda has been presented and approved at the beginning of a meeting, to an amended, an agenda at the beginning of the meeting requires a majority vote. Once the agenda is approved, to amend the agenda later in the meeting requires a two-thirds vote, which would be five out of seven. But it became irrelevant because it did not achieve a majority.
Exactly. Great, thank you for confirming. Okay. So, with that being said, we're going to move on to policy revisions, and I was discussing with Mr. Schultz, and if this is okay with the board, especially due to time, I tend to do this just a little bit differently. I'm going, all of you have had copies of these policies, and I hope have had a time to go through them. And Mr. Schultz says he has not received any type of questions, comments, or requests for additional information. So, these are policy revisions for approval on first read. I'm going to list them and confirm that there are no questions or comments or need for additional information, that they should be placed on the consent agenda for next Monday. So, those will be 1740-4010, Student and Parent Grievance Procedure Attorney Revised; 1742-560, Responding to Complaints Attorney Revised; 1750-7220, Grievance Procedure for Employees Attorney Revised.
I think I had a question on that.
Can we go through them first, and then you tell me what you want to pull back?
Sure.
Okay. Policy 2120, Code of Ethics for School Board Members. Policy 2121, Board Member Conflict of Interest Attorney Revised; 3102, Online Instruction Attorney Revised; 4040-7310, Staff-Student Relations; 4150, School Assignment Transfers and Program Choice Enrollment; 4154, Program Choice Expectations and Continuation; 4331, Assaults, Threats, and Harassment Attorney Revised; 4340, School Level Investigations; 4600, Student Fees; 5070-7350, Public Records, Retention, Release, and Distribution; 7335, Employee Use of Social Media and Electronic Communications Attorney Revised. And you also have the December 2020 summary of policy changes. So, I know that these are all placed on our site. Once these have went through a second reading, the public has total and complete access. Brian, I would ask if you have a problem with me doing it this way, so that we just move through them, and if there's no questions for the policy or the board members, that we just move it through to second read for next week?
No, I think that makes sense, as long as a board member does not want to pull anyone out or raise any particular discussion item. One thing I'd just point out for the new board members, I don't want to tell them something they already know, but just within the last week, it came to my attention elsewhere that somebody asked me, "What is, what is a PLS update? What is PLS?" Well, the School Boards Association has a service called Policies to Lead the Schools. And the North Carolina School Board Association sends out suggested revisions multiple times throughout the year. Those are called the PLS, Policies to Lead the Schools Updates. And our practice is to get the School Board Association recommendations and then review them at the local level to see whether they're acceptable or whether any revision should be made at the local level. So, it's a good process. It's a double review. We don't just take what the School Board Association offers as a blank check, but clearly, we give a lot of attention to them because they give a lot of attention to their policies.
And that's a great explanation. And for the new board members, when you go through School Board one-on-one, you will learn that a lot of these are state-mandated, so we have to comply. Therefore, you know, we can have input, and we can have say, but we always have to comply with the state, you know, regarding policies. And these also will come back to us in a second read before they're approved and implemented. But with that being said, Mr. Walter, I'm hearing that you have a question about one of the policies. Which one?
1750. Let me bring that up.
So, the grievance, 1750-7220, Grievance Procedure for Employees? Is that something that you have sent to Mr. Schultz?
That would not be, um, let's see. Okay, any grievance against the superintendent? Should it be filed directly with the superintendent?
Can you tell us exactly where you are?
This is E. 1D. I think it's page four. And, Mr. Shaw, can you explain why we would remove board? And if there's a grievance against the superintendent, why the grievance should go to the superintendent directly?
Yes, we discussed this at the policy committee level. I think as it previous, as it reads now, the grievance will be filed going first to the Board of Education. And that poses a couple problems. One is, it's not an appeal to the board. It's an initial review by the board. Usually, it makes more sense to have the board review a decision already made. Second, it does not give the superintendent the opportunity to respond and try to address the grievance at the superintendent's level. So, for example, a grievance against a principal will be filed with a principal. There's nothing wrong with a grievance being filed at the level of the individual who's complained about. That gives the principal the first opportunity to respond, issue a decision, and then, there's a written decision that can be appealed to the superintendent and then appealed to the board. If we do not have this filed at the superintendent level, there's no decision, and then, the board hearing is more, it's not an appeal hearing, it's more like an initial trial, and it's just more unwieldy. So, that was my suggestion, that the superintendent be allowed to give his decision, and that then, the person can certainly appeal it to the board, and it's ultimately up to the board whether to allow the grievance or not. It just provides a better structure for hearing the grievance, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you for the explanation.
Does, is that good for all the other board members? Anybody else have a question regarding that? Ms. Carpenter, Kia.
Yeah, there was one thing. On policy, Code of Ethics, one of the things the new board members may want to make sure they had looked at was item number six, the last part of that one, unless authorized by the board. That was something we had, we had added in, in policy. So, they may want to make sure they had saw, you know, looked at that part because it was said, refrain from disclosing of matters discussed in closed session unless authorized by the board. That part was added in there. So, see, that wasn't, wasn't put in there. So, they may want to make sure they read that part.
Yes, Brian.
If I could add on that, the way the current policy reads is that, again, deals with the confidentiality of closed-session discussions, which is a very important point, one for legal purposes, but also to encourage full and candid discussion at the closed session. If people can't be confident that what they say is closed session will not be kept in closed session, then that might inhibit the discussion. But the current policy says, "Board members shall refrain from unauthorized disclosure of matters discussed in closed session." And as I read that before the policy committee, I said, "That tends to beg the question, what is authorized and what's not authorized? Who authorizes it?" So, we moved unauthorized from unauthorized disclosure and said, "Disclosure of matters unless authorized by the board." So, it's clear that the board is the entity that can authorize disclosure. I don't think it changes the meaning as I understood it, but it clarifies as to who has the authority to authorize it.
Ms. Carpenter, Kia, thank you.
We talked about, like, when we release minutes, you know, some of them, we release, and some of them, we don't. And that's where we were saying, when we authorize the release of those minutes, we're saying, "Okay, it's okay that they can be." But when we say no, then we're authorized in saying, "No." So, that's why we're saying authorized by the board.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, and I believe you and Mr. Walter sit on the policy committee? Is that correct? Okay. All right, thank you. So, I'm assuming everybody is okay to move these through to second reading?
I'd like to see 4154 on action.
Prior to the second reading?
Correct. I just want to review a little bit more. I'm still troubled by the...
We will, we will discuss these again on second reading.
Yeah, I'd like to see it on action for next week.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Schultz, are you good for that?
Yeah, absolutely. And then, if there's something we can help clarify when we discuss it at action, please let us know, and we'll...
Yeah, we're removing a report that we had gotten previously.
Okay.
I'm thinking the board probably wants that report.
Okay. So, next is 8.02, Policy Revisions for Approval on Second Read. And, again, there appear to have been no comments, requests for information, but I know this is new for the new board members. Does anyone have anything at this point in time? And I'm just going to run down through these the same way I did the initial set. So, 1710/4021-7230, Prohibition Against Discrimination, Harassment, and Bullying; 1720-4015-7225, Discrimination, Harassment, and Bullying Complaint; 1725-4035-7236, Title IX Sexual Harassment, Prohibited Conduct and Reporting; 1726-4036-7237, Title IX Sexual Harassment Grievance Process; 1760-7280, Prohibition Against Retaliation; 3410, Testing and Assessment Program; 3460, Graduation Requirements; 4001, Equal Education Opportunities; 4334-5035-7345, Use of Unmanned Aircraft; and also, the December 2020 Second Read Summary of Policy Changes. So, I'm hearing that there were no requests for information or comments. Is everyone okay to move that to the, Mr. Walter?
Yeah, you've got a typo on the heading of the, headings of those two new policies. It says something about recruitment when it should...
Which one are you referring to?
The two new ones.
What number?
1725 and 1726. And I think there's also a numbering issue where you eliminated a number one, but you didn't change the other bullet items.
Okay, we'll follow up with you and take a look at those and get those correction, corrected.
So, Brian, I'm assuming, do you think that needs a correction or a clarification?
I need clarification.
Okay, so, Mr. Walter, will you email Mr. Schultz and clarify your question?
Sure, I don't have any issues with the content of this.
Okay. So, do you, are you okay with moving that through to the consent agenda, or you want it pulled for action?
I'm okay with consent agenda.
Okay, so, is everyone in agreement to place all those for second read on the consent agenda? Great, okay. Okay, moving forward. We are going to move into budget amendments. Let me make sure I'm where I need to be as well. So, 8.03 will be budget amendments, and I'm assuming we're bringing Ms. Klutz back.
I'm sorry, there's a delay on my computer.
Thank you.
Good evening, board. Today, we have three budget amendments for you. The first one is the state budget amendment. The first adjustment is probably the one that catches your attention as most significant. It's $875,000 reversion to the state. Reading the note there, it's for the first month ADM for charter schools. That's a number that we anticipate is an adjustment to charters, but we don't necessarily know how much it's going to be each year. The state handles paying charter schools. It's the most complicated thing that you can probably ever imagine. So, they do charter schools based on projections, except for a virtual school. If it's a virtual charter school, they don't do it on projections. So, they adjust you in the, right now. So, in December, they've adjusted us. So, this adjustment reflects 170 students, and of those 170, 98 were virtual. So, that, the 98 is what we would expect to be adjusted for. 72 were adjusted for a new charter school, so they call those newer, growing charter schools, and that was for Bonnie Cone Classical Academy that was new to our district this year. And Bonnie Cone projected 72 students would come from Cabarrus into their school system. So, the state gave them those funds for that. But in reality, only 47 students went to Bonnie Cone. And so, when I called DPI and asked them about the adjustment for that, they said that they did not have the data to accurately reflect where those students come from, and so, we were charged for that adjustment. So, I took the liberty of making the calculation, and essentially, because they don't have the data, we were charged $125,000 more dollars than what I believe is an accurate assessment. It's all within the law. It's how charter schools are funded. It's how charter schools are adjusted. And DPI recognizes the concern, but there's nothing that they can do about it right now. So, $875,000 is our adjustment. Most of that is what we should be adjusted, but $125,000 is definitely not. Most of that is what we should be adjusted, but $125,000 is definitely not, in my opinion. Okay? Those are our state adjustments. If you have any questions, I'll certainly answer them for you.
Board members, any questions for Ms. Clutz?
Okay. The next set is our federal adjustments. Small adjustments, the difference between a planning allotment and an actual allotment. All of these are increases specifically related to our IDEA EC children. Okay. Next is our local special account, and so, these are grants, or scholarships or grants that we've gotten. And you can see that we're reclassing just an ABC grant that we have. We've received an NC Outdoor Heritage Grant at Central Cabarrus High School, and we have received, or, yes, we have received a Plasma Games Pilot Program Grant.
Board members, any questions or comments? Is everyone okay placing these on the consent agenda for next week? Yes? Okay, great. Thank you, Ms. Clutz. All right. Moving on to 8.04, we have the school name change for Royal Oaks Elementary, and then we will have Dr. Crystal Hill back.
I apologize, there's a little bit of a lag. All right. So, I am here to formally request that this item be put on consent agenda. Royal Oaks was recently designated as School of the Arts for the Cabarrus County Schools Program Choice. In addition, the school has added sixth grade and will continue to add a grade level per year until they are a full K8 school. Since the designation, the school has advertised itself as Royal School, Royal Oaks School of the Arts. Since the name Royal Oaks School of the Arts protects the integrity of the original name of the school and reflects the new choice status as well as being, and fighting for middle grades, we recommend officially changing the name to Royal Oaks School of the Arts. Any questions?
Any questions, board members?
Does that change the school code? Does it get two codes? Because it's a middle school and an elementary school, or is it?
No, sir. It's be one code.
We don't have to do a public hearing or anything on that?
No, we can change it. Are you, do you have any concerns or questions?
Essentially, it's already been changed.
Ms. Carpenter, are you okay?
Yeah, well, I did, I just want to make sure we get it answered.
Okay. Is everyone okay moving this to consent for next week?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. And next, we will move to 8.05. We have some board training to add to the consent agenda, and of course, we know who this is involving. I'm just going to hit all three of these at the same time. So, Ms., or Ms. Carpenter, would you like to speak to those yourself?
I'll have, that's okay.
Okay, great. So, we have training credits, and also for the transformation, public school transformation now, the Title IX training for the others. I would, and actually, I know that all of you've had time to read these and just to save time. Are all of you okay with these? Do you have any questions, or can we just move these to consent as well? Consent? Good. Okay, great. So, we will move these to the consent agenda for next week as well. And that leaves us the very last, 8.06, next week. If you can confirm, bring your calendars with you so that we can discuss. I think Dr. Lauter alluded to the placeholder we've had for the board retreat, or actually, we like to call it a planning session, to make sure that we're, we are good for some timeframes. So, just be prepared for that. Dr. Lauter, do you have any final comments regarding the planning session? I know that's going to be new for the new school board members.
That is an open meeting, so that date has already been advertised. It's out, it's on the board website. So, the date has been set, unless you guys want to change it.
The only problem I had is that the new board members did, never would have had an opportunity to weigh in on that if they have a conflict. I think we just need to confirm it. It's probably fine. It's good with me, and I think the majority of answer, but I just thought that the two new board members especially, and/or Mr. Fur, if they had a conflict, they just need to let us know.
Yeah, I think what we ran into last time is that, so when that's published, whenever it goes out in July, if we change that two weeks out or whatever, then that could be a staff problem, too. So, in other words, if they plan for January 21st, and we now change it to February 1st, then that kind of starts the avalanche of people that may not be able to be there.
Okay.
So, if we're going to change the date, then yeah, we need to kind of run that by everybody.
Great, all right. And then the last thing, we, we actually have, you've all received a request for committees that you would like to serve on. I'm going to pass these out just before, after we adjourn, just so that you kind of get an idea of what's still there, what some have asked to be appointed to. I'm actually adding the COVID Task Four Committee. I've gotten a consensus that the majority of the board agrees with that. We can take that discussion up again next week if we need to. It'll be on there.
Can I send you the updated spreadsheet?
I'm sorry?
I think there were changes since the last time I sent it out. You want me to?
Yes, and I've got it. Yeah, I'm just going to hand it out, so y'all can look at it and spend that time.
Yeah, I think I have an updated one, so.
I just updated it last night as well.
Okay.
Okay. And then you can just look at it. If it's good, great. If it's not, if you want to plug in in some other places, you know, you just let me know. Email me and let me know, so I can clean it up and have it presented for next week. And with that being said, is there anything else? I'll give you an opportunity to make a final comment, board members. Are we good? Okay. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the Cabarrus County Board of Education's work session for Monday, December the 7th.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say a.
Aye.
And opposed. And we will, with that, say goodnight to our viewing audience, and we look forward to seeing you next Monday, December the 14th, for our Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Meeting. Thank you, and goodnight.